Good morning, everyone, and welcome out to our regular meeting of October 1st. And for the record, it is 9:10. Candace, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I've got to call roll first.
Oh, call roll first. Thank you. Sorry. You let us call roll, and then we'll get you. Present.
Mr. President.
Present.
Present.
Present. Candace, if you would, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Candace. Appreciate it. You know, Commissioners, I just, you know, it's, we talk about budget that wasn't approved by the federal government, and, you know, it trickles down right here in Taos County. This morning, we were supposed to start two timber sales, and there's no timber staff, so we can't even start timber sales. So, it basically puts our business on a whole, too. So, I mean, this is, you know, this budget from Washington DC trickles right down to Taos County right now. I mean, it didn't take, but today's the first day, and it's already affecting us right here in Taos County. We need to push our legislators to get on board, and let's get something done. As we move on, Commissioners, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have?
Mr. Chairman, under County Manager's report, I would like to add Item C, Mrs. Candace O'Donnell. And then, under Commissioner's report, under B, I would like to add the 1/8 tax that we passed when we were going to do the complex, and that was for the special projects. I think staff is looking into it to see where that fund is at, or if it was put on the budget, or where it's at.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else? If not, do we have a motion to approve as amended?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
We do have a motion to approve as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorst.
Yes.
Mr. Gudon.
Yes. We'll go on to Item 5, Citizens Concerns, Discussion, Consideration, Decision Regarding the Following Citizens Wishing to Speak to Us. We'll limit their comments to five minutes, but no action will be taken. It'll be more of a comments and consideration. Is there anybody in the audience? Candace? If you'll just state your name for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Town Attorney, Staff, and viewing audience. My name is Candace O'Donnell, owner of Camino Real Productions. Since I've never had the luxury of speaking to you without having to be behind the camera, I thought I would take this opportunity now. And I would like to thank you for the years you have supported a transparent government made evidence by your willingness to be recorded. Back in the late 1980s, when I and several others, including Bill Kniff, we started the Public Access Channel. Bill, where are you? Back in the 1980s, we worked to create the Peg Channel. It's now 22 on Comcast. We saw opportunities in business for small business nonprofits, and in bringing an open exchange of democratic views from all segments of the Taos community. When I started videotaping the Commission meetings in 1987, I was a volunteer. It took some getting used to back then for Commissioners to feel comfortable, but look how far you've come. You are all naturals in front of the camera. I respect decisions you make, and I am honored to have documented a democratic process for a very, very long time, having missed only several meetings in close to three decades. Over the years, people have asked me, "How can you stand being in those meetings?" I explain to them, "I am fascinated by how decisions are made here in these chambers, that to witness government inaction is something that I truly love." And when I tell them I enjoy it, they look at me like I am strange. So, in closing, I just wanted to state here in public that I truly appreciate the opportunity to serve at the pleasure of the Commissions.
Thank you, Candace.
Thank you, Candace.
Appreciate it. I do want to recognize Mayor Garcia in the audience. Thank you for being here. So, anybody else wishing to speak to the Commission that is not on the agenda? Okay, so then we'll go ahead and go on. There are minutes, Discussion, Consideration, Decision Regarding the Following, the September 10th, 2013 Special Meeting. Commissioners?
Some who to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
And a second. If no further discussion, call for the vote, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorst.
Yes.
Mr. Gudon.
Yes. So, we go on to September 17th, 2013 Regular Meeting. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'll abstain from this particular meeting. I was not present.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, correction, that's not that one. I'll stay on the vote.
Okay. So, we want to second that, Commissioner?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorst.
Yes.
I'll abstain. I wasn't here.
Yes. So, as we move on, under Presentations, Discussion, Consideration, Decision Regarding the Following, Update and Discussion from the Water Advisory Board Committee Regarding Concerns They Have. Kay Matthews, Chairperson of the Water Advisory Committee. Thank you, and welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I've been here before a few times to discuss the Water Advisory Board. I'm the chairperson, but I want to point out the other members who are here, and I believe more of them will probably trickle in. Ron Gardner, and Joe Torres, and... The reason we had asked to be put on the agenda was that, as you know, we submitted to the County Commission our findings on the proposed water transfer of Cuesta area water rights to the Taos Valley Rio Lucero area. And we had, as stipulated in the bylaw, in the Taos County Public Welfare Ordinance, our job is to review all transfers within or from Taos County, and make an assessment based on the criteria in that ordinance as to whether that transfer is in accordance with the public welfare of the citizens of Taos County. So, we went ahead and did our job, and presented our findings to you. It wasn't a unanimous decision, but it was six to two in favor of that the Taos County Commission should protest this transfer. Since that time that the County Commission failed to review our recommendation, and the time for filing a protest elapsed. We then inquired of the county staff and the Commission why the County Commission didn't hear the, our recommendation in a timely fashion. And we got some conflicting messages back. We were told, on one hand, that there hadn't been a quorum available to hear the, our recommendation and make a decision. But we also got some messages back from county staff that because the application is under the auspices of the Abeta Water Settlement, that the County Commission, or at least some members of the County Commission, feel that that does not come under the purview of the Water Advisory Board, that we should take a hands-off approach to any transfers under the Abeta Settlement. We also heard back from county staff that our purview should be to only look at water transfers leaving Taos County, which, in my opinion, is an abrogation of the ordinance, which distinctly states that we're to review, excuse me, all transfers within or from the county of Taos. So, we requested this meeting with all the Commissioners to clarify our duties and roles as members of the Water Advisory Committee pertaining to both those issues, pertaining to transfers under the auspices of the Abeta Settlement, and pertaining to reviewing transfers both within and from the county of Taos. So, that's what I'm presenting to you today, and I'm asking you for your opinion.
Okay. Tom?
Thank you, Chairman. As I've stated before, I don't think that Taos County should be filing formal protests against transfers from individual landowners within Taos County that go to public entities that have customers who are citizens of Taos County, and that serve those customers. For one thing, the allocations within Abeta provide for those transfers, provide for those types of transfers to occur. If Taos County opposes those transfers, it makes it more difficult for the Abeta Settlement to be effectuated. It endangers the funding, and it endangers 40 years of negotiations between all of these parties. And, you know, what I keep thinking as representatives of constituents within Taos County, we have to support the water-based entities that have customers who are our constituents. And if these water rights between individual landowners are not allowed to be transferred to entities within Taos County, it makes it possible for them to be transferred out of Taos County. And that's clearly not something that we want to do. And I just am very uncomfortable, as a county commissioner, opposing that Abeta Water Settlement. It's just such a critical and important achievement for Taos County, to finally be able to settle those claims, the Aboriginal claims of the pueblo, and all of those entities who serve our constituents within Taos County. It just, it just makes no sense to me for us to file those oppositions. And filing an opposition from Taos County with the state engineer is no small thing. I mean, you know, we're a governmental entity, and that has weight and bearing on the eventual decision made by the state engineer. And when the representative and the state engineer came up here to talk with us, he explained that to us, and he said that by making these oppositions, we were going to end up expending these governmental funds on lawyers rather than effectuating this very important agreement. So, you know, I don't necessarily take the approach that the Water Advisory Board should be hands-off. You know, I appreciate that you have an ordinance, and you have criteria under it that you follow, although we did amend it to include some recognition of Abeta just a couple months ago.
May I ask you a question about that particular language?
Yes.
In the amended ordinance, number seven, language was included that says, "Taos County recognizes the impact of the Abeta Settlement on resolving disputes with regard to water rights within the county and watershed, and that the transfer of water rights between entities within the county is a necessary mechanism for the implementation of the settlement." So, my interpretation of that language is that, yes, we have to be cognizant of the Abeta Settlement, but this does not prohibit the committee from going ahead and looking at any transfers under the aegis of the Abeta Settlement and making our recommendation.
I agree with you. But as a commissioner who ultimately has to make the decision, I'm not going to concur with the Water Board's advice to formally oppose these transfers.
May I respond?
Sure.
First of all, I don't think the supposition is correct, that if a transfer within Taos County from one party to another is opposed, then that water would necessarily be transferred outside of Taos County. I think that's a specious argument.
But I didn't make that argument. You know, it's not necessarily, but it certainly increases the chances, so we agree on that.
I have another question. With the position you're taking on the Abeta Settlement, would you therefore take the same position on the Ammit Settlement, which is the water settlement in the Pawaki Valley that also has come to a, has been signed? And Taos, the Santa Fe County and the Department of the Interior are preparing to file applications to transfer 1,100 acre feet of top-of-the-world water rights to fulfill the terms of the Ammit Settlement. So, if you're going to take the position that the Abeta Settlement took 40 years to negotiate, are you going to take the position that Taos County shouldn't file a protest that would interfere with the terms of the Ammit Settlement?
No, my position is that as long as they stay within Taos County, which they all do under Abeta, then I'm going to support them. Obviously, in the Ammit Settlement, it's a completely different situation. You're talking about a transfer that goes from Taos County out of Taos County. And so, I would obviously look at that one from a different perspective.
I think it's important to remember that while the Abeta Settlement deals with water within Taos County, there are numerous watersheds within Taos County that were not included in the terms of the Abeta Settlement, and were not at the table when these things were negotiated. And the, this 200-acre foot transfer from the Cuesta watershed to the Taos Valley, those people in Cuesta had no input, and we, all of us were caught by surprise. I mean, we anticipated that there were probably going to be, Taos Valley was going to start looking for water in some of the other watersheds, and we were a little surprised at the amount of water that's being applied for, and the costs involved in that transfer. And this could happen in the Penasco area, this could happen in any number of areas.
Of course, the reason that these transfers come from north of Cuesta is because that is the largest bank of water rights available on the market. And so, the simple fact is that Abeta cannot work unless the entities are allowed to transfer water rights to supply their clients. And then, when individual landowners like the Gallagher's and the Ortega's have these rights, they don't want to use them on their property anymore, so they want to sell them. To me, it's a good thing that they're available for the entities to be able to use them to serve our constituents. It's an individual landowner who is deciding to sell a property right to a water and sanitation district, or to an asequia system, or to a mutual within Taos County. Those entities need those water rights in order for them to continue to do business. El Prado Water and Sanitation is in deficit. Now, I understand that the city of Cuesta, the village of Cuesta, is also in deficit, and that they weren't part of Abeta, and therefore, they don't have this source of funding to purchase water rights. As a commissioner, I want to work with the village of Cuesta to find ways to make up their deficit. And we really have to explore that, because obviously, the village of Cuesta has clients also, and in the long run, they're going to need water rights. So, you know, I'm hoping that we'll be able to find a way to raise those funds and support Cuesta in purchasing some of those water rights.
And I think all of us oppose any water rights leaving our community, any water rights. We don't want to see a single one of our water rights leave our community, and we, I will personally oppose any water rights leaving our community. I do want to make that statement.
What do you mean by "community"?
Taos County.
In terms of watershed to watershed, how do you feel?
Watershed to watershed, anything leaving our community. The 200-acre water, foot of water rights that are being proposed from the top-of-the-world farms to Santa Fe, Santa Fe County owns the property there. Yes, I oppose that.
But you don't oppose the transfer of water rights from one watershed to another within Taos County?
Well, I mean, again, I appreciate you guys looking at every single one of those situations and bringing back a recommendation to us. I think that was the purpose that we formed that board, as an advisory board to us, so that we can look at every transfer that does happen. But, again, these are water rights that, again, as Commissioner Blankenhord stated, we need to work with Cuesta. We need to try to find water rights that they can use, or a bank of them, or money to purchase them, or hopefully, maybe somebody in that area would want to donate them to Cuesta. It's very important that, you know, they're, they're part of our community, and we keep, we will try to help Cuesta any way we can. Ron, did you have?
I was just wanting all the Commissioners to have an opportunity to respond.
Ms. Matthews, I, Mr. Chairman, I was just as puzzled as I believe you are as to why the meeting hadn't taken, taken place here at Taos County to discuss this earlier. I understand that we did have quorum issues somewhere around the middle of July, August, and part of September, and I don't know if that truly is the reason, or what else, if there are other reasons as to why we didn't meet to discuss these transfers of water rights, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I concur with fellow Commissioners now, but, you know, I have a question. Why is it that Cuesta never tried to obtain some of its waters, water rights? Why is that?
I'll leave Mayor, the mayor, to address that question, but in the research that we did, and we weren't able to verify it, Mr. Ortega claimed that he offered those water rights to the town of Cuesta, but I, I don't know if that's the case or not, from previous mayors who aren't available to verify that or not. But certainly, the current mayor has expressed the fact that Cuesta very much wants to purchase water rights. One of the stumbling blocks, of course, is money. And under the terms of the Abeta Settlement, the applicant now is, the water rights are being paid for by the federal government, as is the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project, where those waters are going to be stored at, to the tune of $2 million. So, it's unlikely that a town the size of Cuesta could compete with that kind of money. I also wanted to, just, I'm going to let Ron and whoever else on the committee would like to speak, if that's okay with the Commissioners.
Yes, that's fine.
I would, just a couple of closing points. Somebody brought me an article about the millions spent on leaky water storage plan. I think we need to keep that in mind. We're looking at a lot of money being spent on the Aqua Recovery Storage Plant to store these waters from the Rio Lucero as part of this transfer. And my other overall, you know, this, this committee was designated under, there are three criteria that the state engineers, state engineer's office considers to assess a water transfer, which I'm sure you're aware of, and public welfare has never really been defined in, in a court, in a court decision. So, when Taos County stepped up to the plate and decided to, by ordinance, form this committee and char, and develop criteria that constitutes a public welfare, this was something that was looked at statewide and lauded for finally putting on the table what exactly public welfare means. And so, those of us who served on this committee as volunteers, I must add, for two and a half years with no recompense, we took our job very seriously, and I think we've, we've done a lot of good work, and documented that work, that I hope that the, that some other counties will also step up to the plate and decide to incorporate into their, into their policy. But under, with the responses that I got today, and with the, with the taking this into account, I'm going to resign from the committee. I only speak for myself, and the other folks here can express their feelings to you.
Morning, Mr. Commissioners. First, I wanted to thank Kay for doing an extraordinary job under the circumstances. Just on this transfer alone, we've taken four trips into town. And, you know, I'd like to talk about the issue of public welfare and inter-basin or watershed transfers, not out-of-county, but watershed transfers. 1987, the Interstate Stream Commission began the process of regional water planning. That was to determine the existing uses of water, uses in the state of New Mexico, and to try and budget for future uses. Under that regional water planning, Palomo Martinez from the Taos Valley Asequia Association has been credited with forming the template for that. One of the reasons that he was an advocate is because he was a very strong advocate for a public welfare statement, which was a compelled component of a regional water plan. Public welfare statement is for a judge to review to see if there's any impacts on a transfer that go beyond just the water rights of the private property. And in the case of asequias, and that's why Palomo represented the public welfare statement, is that the attorneys, particularly in the Taos Valley Asequia Association, thought that, that asequias needed an additional protection from transfers that would take water out of their, their irrigation systems and take it out to another basin. And so, we had, I don't know, 15 years to develop regional water plans. I myself have spent hours in legal continuing education, where the attorney from the Taos Valley Asequia Association asked us and compelled us to take in special consideration, under a public welfare statement, how water rights that are disconnected from asequias impact community, culture, and irrigated lands. I've also spent a lot of time involved in the asequia authority and the asequia banking legislation that the legislature passed in 2004. The prime advocates, once again, was the Taos Valley Asequia Association, and they were there trying to protect irrigated lands in the asequias from transfers that went out of their area. That's why, that's why the TVAA, their attorneys, spent so much time developing that public welfare statement, and those two pieces of legislation, so that transfers wouldn't go out of an asequia area. I find it very confusing to realize that the Taos Valley Asequia Association is one of the first transfers that would try and use an inner watershed or an inner basin transfer to satisfy their claims. And the reason that inner basin or watershed-to-watershed transfers don't work is because they're just paper, and they don't create any new water here in Taos Valley. They just bring in a new demand. They didn't create any new water. And so, if there was enough water to go around in the beginning on surface water, then there wouldn't be a need to go get water rights from another area. There would be water to satisfy all the parties claiming surface waters. So, apparently, this entity is reaching beyond the supply of water. The same with El Prado. El Prado's going to another watershed to get paper water rights and develop them here. So, it is a zero-sum game. If there was enough water to go around, then there wouldn't be a settlement. There wouldn't be all the parties involved. So, you know, I think the Committee, the Advisory Board needs to be commended, because we've played by the rules put in front of us for 20 years. We took our responsibilities seriously. We have one of the better public welfare statements in the state. One of the reasons we do is because Taos County is predominated by irrigated lands, culture, and asequias. And so, a lot of time was developed, spent in developing the public welfare statement, three years under the regional water plan. You know, over-adjudication has happened under our state engineer, and, you know, it defies history itself to just look down the Rio Grande Basin and realize that the state engineer made more- that the state engineer made more commitments for water than exist. It's like getting a number in line at a bakery. That's what adjudication is. You have your, your right in time, you're seeing your water right, and you gotta get to the bakery and say, number one through 60 gets served. And if the state engineer says, you know, we're gonna approve 80 loaves of bread, somebody still comes up short. That's why the rest of the basin is still adjudicating water rights, because somebody's gonna come up short. They have to, in a legal way, find out who has number one through 60, because probably number 60 through 80 is gonna come up short. What I can say about inner basin transfers is that if it can happen here, and it's mostly happening from my commissioner's district, 1,700 acre foot going to the county of Santa Fe, large block going to El Prado, another block of water rights going from the Cuesta area to the TVAA here in this valley. If it can happen inner basin, it can happen to your district and your district. And that's why the advisory board actually recommended a protest. All things, you know, considered, once again, we've played by the rules. We'd like to be able to ask the right questions, the right hydrologic questions, but apparently we're being discouraged from asking those questions. I think the premise, just as a board member, I think both the premise of the El Prado and the Taos Valley Aseki Association transfers are just overreaching a real water supply. So, you know, we put that in our recommendation. You know, I'm sorry, it's so inconvenient, but you asked us to scrutinize these things, and we've scrutinized them pretty well. We've taken our time to scrutinize them. We've played by the rules set out by one of the, one of the claimants for 20 years. And that is to use a public welfare statement, to give a recommendation under an ordinance and an advisory board, and talk about the implications. So, if we want to just turn a blind eye to the implications, that's fine. You can, you can vote whatever way you want. I think that the advisory board's been very diligent to its responsibilities, very diligent to a 20-year history of trying to protect irrigated lands and particularly northern New Mexico. And so, I can understand Kay's frustration. I share some of it. I think we need to actually ask more critical questions on these transfers and not just give it a carpe launch. Once again, if it can happen between watersheds here, it can happen that way across county lines or within county lines.
I have a question. Now, you're talking about the watersheds. On this three transfers that are coming from the north, are they, do they have anything to do with the Abeta settlement?
Two of them do.
Two of them do?
Yes. Now, you have plenty of constituents that are probably gonna protest this on their own. So, you know, the counties would just be one more in a series of protests.
You know, because you painted a more clear picture to me now. See, but the problem is, is when the gentleman from the Santa Fe came down, he says that if we protested against the Abeta settlement, you know, it would just deadlock, you know, would be money spent foolishly. You know what I mean? But, you know, but I understand, you know, where you're coming from now. You know what I mean?
These are complex agreements.
You know, I don't think that's a good, good idea. You know what I mean? And because I understand your point now. You know what I mean?
And Ron, I wanna really applaud the Water Advisory Board Committee. We thank you for all your work. We, we know you guys do it voluntarily. You guys, you know, I've sat with you several times in Santa Fe when this was going on. I think Charlie Gutierrez and myself were the two that went and sat in those meetings. You know, I truly applaud you guys for your work. You know, I, I, Ms. Matthews, I applaud you for work, and I thank you for your work, and I wish you'd reconsider that. I think, you know, we continue to look at water in our community. I think, as we've all said for years, water is our life here. You know, that's, you know, and this is where the water starts, right here in Taos County. And that's why, you know, we don't want to bleed it off to downstream. So, you know, at this point, Ron, are you opposing the Abeta water settlement? Is that, I mean, what is your?
Oh, actually, I'm glad you asked that question because, you know, like Commissioner Blankenhorn, I'm glad that the tribal claims have been settled historically that that needed to be done. I'm very glad that the mutual domestics, the water servers, because under the Amont settlement, the local groundwater users got cut out the first time. And so, that was a flawed settlement. They had to go back and redo it. I could support El Prado in a modest increase in development of their water. I think at a certain point in time, it will affect the Rio Grande. That's a hydrologic reality. I don't know whether it's sustainable, that part of the Abeta. The TVAA component of the Abeta would be fine by me had they found their paper water rights within the valley itself. If there was so much water to go around, they could have found it within the valley itself, the five-stream system of the Abeta. The fact that they've gone to another area, well, I'll let the other areas speak for themselves, the mayor of Cuesta, the other people on the ditch, they have fairly strong feelings. Even the one vote that didn't go with us, I asked that vote in our hearing, if this was going from his ditch to Cuesta, would he protest it? And he said yes, because that is the issue. It's transferring between watersheds. It's just a paper transfer that creates new demand on the same water system. So, once again, if it can happen here, it can happen in the Punasco Valley. It can happen on the south end of the valley. It's already happening in the Cuesta Sunshine Valley area. And, you know, it's great that our counties come so far since the top-of-the-world application. Think about it. You know, we've gone, we've adopted our regional water plan. We really refined a very sharp public welfare statement. We formed the ordinance and the advisory board, not only because of the top of the world, but consider there's 3 million other taps downstream along the Rio Grande and a bunch of regional water plants that talk about securing water rights upstream and from senior water users. That leaves Taos County completely in a crosshair. That's why the county of Santa Fe went for the top-of-the-world stuff. So, you know, I understand the needs of our, our water suppliers. Like I said, particularly the mutual domestics. In the case of this settlement, and one of the reasons that I strongly support that component of it, is our drinking water suppliers were not even in existence 60 years ago. It took the Sanitation Act to bring them into being. And they did not have water rights, kinda like the village of Cuesta. We were providing municipal use and community use, and the state, and they had to be junior water rights because they were the last ones to come into the system. But you could see the mutual domestics in this period of time have come up short. They just about have enough water rights to supply their existing uses. Some don't have very far reach into the future. So, the component of groundwater users that supply the town, even El Prado to a degree, and the mutual domestics, were very important to settle. We just think that there was questions still unanswered about whether the hydrology is real, whether there's enough water, questions about if we do it like this here for our own convenience, can Las Companias start looking up here or Rio Reba County? You know, your district is more vulnerable than Commissioner Sanchez's district. Here, we're fairly secure, you know. Commissioner Blankenhorn's district has the largest population center, the largest demand for, for drinking water. Or in Commissioner Barone, you know, you have the town, you have water suppliers. So, once again, it's not an easy thing. We've played by all the rules set out in front of us for 20 years. So, I don't know which way to turn here.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blankenhorn.
Thank you. You know, Ron, you're assuming that there's not enough supply to cover all of the allocations that have been designated within Abeta. But there were hydrologists on every side of that agreement who have studied it and who have said, if we drill these deep wells, we believe that there is sufficient supply. Once we drill those wells, they will be used as gauging stations. You can measure from the amount that's taken out of those deep wells to determine whether or not the hydrologist's conclusions were correct. And there's a provision within Abeta that says every year or every other year, we're gonna do these measurements, and we're going to see if our assumptions are correct. And if not, then they'll renegotiate some of the allocations that have been made. And, you know, the reason we're going from shallow to deep is, there's lots of historical reasons regarding the pueblo and the buffalo pasture, but it's, it's a technique that's used in a lot of different communities throughout the West. As it happens, hydrologists believe that this great Rio Grande rift that we live in the middle of does contain a very substantial source of deep underground water. It's stored under there. It doesn't evaporate. It's an efficient way of using the water that's available to us. And the government has pledged money to develop that infrastructure. But if a local governmental entity such as ours continues to oppose every single transfer because it's a paper transfer from one basin to another, that's going to endanger the agreement that has been worked so hard to come to. You're right, it's about supply and demand, but you're presuming, without knowing, that the supply isn't gonna be there. We're gonna have to find out. And as far as, and as far as the demand goes, for historical reasons, that area north of Cuesta has obtained, those lands have obtained huge amounts of water rights. Those lands are not all being used to produce potatoes and whatever else that was historically produced. And so, individual owners just say, okay, I'm not going to use the water to develop this land agriculturally anymore. Therefore, I'm going to sell it, which will enable the entities in the other district to use the water out of the well. I mean, it's as simple as that. Obviously, we're not draining water physically out of Cuesta. And, and there's no evidence that just because a couple of tracts of land are no longer gonna be able to irrigate, that that's going to endanger the current workings of the Asekiya. And so, you know, again, I just don't want to be in a position to where I am going against all of these entities who have worked so hard to craft this historical agreement and all of these hydrologists who have come up with this plan. And, you know, but, but obviously, the Water Advisory Board is taking a position that we're going to say no to any, any transfers from one basin to another within Taos County. And if you do that, then Abeta just can't work.
There was a lot of hydrologists involved in the overappropriation of water in the rest of the basin. There was a lot of...
Well, we're gonna see. When the wells are drilled and they begin to use them, and we gauge them and we measure them, then we're going to see.
And so, once again, you know, you have a limited amount of parties trying to satisfy all their claims.
65 parties.
Is it so unthinkable that, in the desire to make everybody satisfied, that they, that they get their slice of the pie, that they have not overestimated the actual size of the pie? Once again, if the wet water was there, there would not be a need for a settlement.
The wet water is there, Ron. It's, it's in the aquifer. The wet water is there. That's, that's the whole premise. And, you know, I know that you have your concerns, and I appreciate them, but I'm not gonna say no to Abeta because you have your concerns. I want to see how this plays out. You know, a lot of really smart people have worked a long, long time to make this occur. And I'm not gonna just presume that I know more than them, and, you know, they're all wrong and these wells aren't gonna work. I'm not, I don't know enough to, to be able to make that decision. And since I represent so many of my constituents who need this to work, I have a duty to, to support Abeta. That's, that's the way I see it.
And we've had a duty to try and depict what the impacts are. So, quite frankly, the impact of the Taos Valley Aseki Association is a depletion of the Rio Ando regardless of who lives along it. The development of El Prado will at least impact the Rio Grande. The Rio Grande has about 120 CFS of spring flow that comes into it. The spring flow that comes in from the High Bridge down to Pilar is about 20, about the fifth of flow of the river that goes through the National Monument.
We can't take all morning debating this as hydrologists because neither of us are. And obviously, there's, it's complex, and neither of us are gonna come up with the answer. So...
Okay, so, we're skeptical of the hydrology. We're worried about the county doing aquifer mining and impairing, you know, future water resources.
I'd like, I just want to make a statement. I'll reset my statement, what I said a while ago. I am ready to protest this water rights transfer, because now I know more about it. You know what I mean? And I don't think it's right that they move from watershed to watershed, you know? Because if we start doing that, then it's gonna happen anywhere within the county.
I think that was the bigger picture of our recommendation, Mr. Commissioner.
But it is, and that's why you, we have you as an advisory board, so you can bring strong recommendations to us. You know, if not, you know, what's the use of having new people on board? You know what I mean? Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Commissioner Romero.
Mr. Chairman, there was a deadline that had to be met. The deadline, obviously, has passed, as I understand. What was the day?
The date?
The date of the deadline.
He gives out all the dates. It was that week.
I don't think anybody was in town that...
About 10 individuals protested. I protested. Could I also ask a question? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, just kind of wondering, the county, our staff did not take any more action to, to make sure that this was, was being addressed.
Mr. Archuleta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as I remember that day, it was the day that we had DFA here. Two commissioners were presenting on a presentation to DFA, and then there was two commissioners that were, I believe, available, and one commissioner that was not available on that day.
Okay, and was wondering how come we didn't bother to reschedule, Mr. Chairman?
It was, it was a day that was, that was, I believe, that was the last day that it was possible. I think Mr. Ballas can, or Nathan can talk a little bit more about that, but...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I know that for some of the members of the committee, the two issues are linked, their perception about the commission's stand on Abeta, and that it didn't get before you. The reality of it was, there were three very long days that the Water Advisory Committee spent on it. And I was not present for all three, but at the second one, I was a little concerned about the timeframe. If you remember about that time, we were having county commission meetings and special meetings every week. In addition, you had NMAC, and there were some things taking members out of town. I advised... I advised the group when it started to break up about 11:30 or noon and members said they had to go, that at the second meeting, I said, you really need to be aware that I can't guarantee you that if you don't finish today, that we can get a meeting for you to have this heard. And at that point, we're shooting for a regularly scheduled meeting. They insisted they could not finish that day and went to another meeting. The report came out. We tried to schedule a special meeting, but as the county manager indicated, there were already two or three things going on during that 48-hour period. We could not get the Commissioners together and the next Tuesday, when the Commissioners would have been available, which was the day after a holiday, would not have met the timeframe. We would have had to have the paperwork in by Friday because the way the calendar worked out, Sunday, it would have been the last day possible for submitting comments. There was a memo in which the press asked the question, I believe at the prompting of the Water Advisory Committee, why we had not appealed. And I provided a written explanation, which I copied the chairman on, which stated that we could not make the quorum, but we also were aware from the hearings that there were other parties protesting. And we had made a phone call to the State Engineers' Office and asked if it would be possible, that if the Commission decided to take a stand, that we could attach comments to those other submissions by other parties. So, we were aware that it wasn't going to go unimposed. And what, we as the county have no more status than anyone else that opposes it. We didn't have any hydrological studies or technical evidence that we were going to submit, that trumped whatever the other parties were submitting. It was just a philosophical protest based on our not wanting water to move from one watershed to another. So, we, staff felt we, we had covered all those bases. And we were also aware from the cross comments and emails that a number of members on the committee had already said they were going to file the same appeals. So, the same information was going to be before the Office of the State Engineer. Now, there was a comment in that email that stated that the county commission had reflected in discussion in an earlier meeting that they were unsure and it would be coming before them whether or not we, as a general policy, we would be opposing a beta settlement, water settlement elements. There was no official stand. But we, we still feel, staff feels, and, and as you're, if you can recall back, subject, subsequent to that meeting, I appeared before the county commission and suggested that we may need to take a look at a number of revisions for the Water Advisory Committee because if we were going to give you testimony on which you would take a stand as a public body, then you needed a record on which to make that stand. And a lot of what had been discussed at the meeting was personal opinions. So, we had said we would come back to this body with a couple of recommendations, including having you take a stand on a beta. Was that a good use of the committee's time or resources? Secondly, that we advised the committee that we would like them to meet here in the county chambers so the meetings could be recorded and that we could separate who was actually on the committee from the discussion that was taking place with audience members and that they could be identified. And I still think those are good changes. I hope the committee does stay. I think they can be tremendously effective and we've already had changes in front of you in the ordinance to broaden their scope into policy as well as examining for the planning staff some development. But one of the things I think that would be important is that in that, those changes to that ordinance, we assigned staff to this all-volunteer group. And so that they would have more time to review these applications, because they do have a very short time, that a copy, when filed with the clerk, would also have to be filed with the Planning Department. And the Planning Staff would provide a synopsis of the application and state whether it was, who were the objectors, was there a question of cross watershed? And we are attempting to build a water resource library to assist in that.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Bellis, with regards to the water rights, and maybe Mayor Garcia can answer the question as well, there was a question as to whether the ownership of, of the water rights was in fact legal? Or was it being questioned by other members of the community and other asequias and even family members of the owners of, of these water rights? And I was wondering if that question had finally been answered.
Has not. My name's Jeanie Masters and I'm a Commissioner with the Yanu Asequia System where this rights are wanting to be transferred. Mr. Bernie Ortega and two of his brothers owned this section of land. It was a housing development way back. They sold it, and I believe '95, and they kept the water rights. The three brothers paid the assessment on that water, on those rights, through to 2000, when the final adjudication was signed. At that point, we found out via asequia system that Mr. Bernie Ortega had reserved all those rights just under his name. The other two brothers paid the assessment up until 2000. I have a note that Mr. Ortega sent me saying after the final adjudication was signed, to let him know how many rights were adjudicated and so he could split them up. That was never done. After Mr. Ortega passed away and since Lawrence has offered to sell this right, I have checked with District Court, Mr. Bernie Ortega's estate has never been probated. So, yes, there is a definite cloud on the ownership of those rights.
So, Mr. Chairman, is, is someone doing, it, it seems to me like if you want to stop this transfer from, from happening, this would be the way to, to go.
I've, I've done...
And probably the least expensive.
And that's what I've done. Although, at the committee hearing, he said that his dad's estate had been probated. There's no record of it in District Court.
So, is anyone taking this lead?
The, the other heirs have tried to get the Commission, the Asequia Commission, to do their work for them. Neither, I don't think the two brothers' kids, widow and the other kids, or certainly not the association, have the money for attorney's fees to fight this. But we'll do what we have to do, I guess. But that's, that's the starting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Masters. Mayor Garcia?
Mr. Duran, I will answer your question. The Village of Cuesta certainly doesn't have the money to purchase the, the water rights. We would love to purchase those water rights, to be honest with you, but we just don't have the money. I wish that when they were working on the abeta settlement, that the outside communities had been involved in it. Because certainly, when this is happening, now it's happening to us. These waters are being trans, wanting to be transferred from, from our location. We were never, never included in that settlement agreement. We would have had the money, like everybody else, to purchase water rights if we had been included, but we were left out. We were never notified. And I think the same thing is happening to the people in Costilla and Sunshine Valley. Those water rights are also under the Colorado Compact that they have. So, there's a lot of things, a lot of components that go into this. The water rights that are being sold by Mr. Ortega are within the village limits. They're in Yanos, the Yanu Commission. But also Cabresto, which I'm a Commissioner on, the asequia, where the senior water right, and those water rights are available only on availability to Yanos. So, there would be a question there too. Are those, they have availability only when there's water available. The water rights are really Cabrestos. If we do share, when there is water, they get their share of the water. But when there isn't water, they don't get any water. In the last four years, you can ask Mrs. Masters here, they haven't received water because there hasn't been enough water. We've been in a drought. So, Cabresto, as being the senior water right, gets those waters. So, there's a lot of things that go into where this water transfers. And I think that the, the State Engineer is giving out paper transfers, but eventually, it's going to catch up with them because there isn't enough water. And I agree with Ron Gardner. If, if there is so much water, according to the State Engineer, why weren't those water rights taken out of the Taos Valley, not out of the Cuesta area? And it is going to impact Penasco, any, and, any of the entities that, or any of the asequias that are within Taos County. So, there's a lot of things that need to be considered, Mr. Blankenhorn, that there's a lot of the issues with, with, with this water rights. And there is, you know, the ones in Sunshine Valley? I think that those people up in Costilla and Amalia, if they only knew, in Sunshine, only knew that this is happening, I don't think they've been, they're aware of what's happening with this water transfers. And I don't know if their asequias are well-educated to know that this is going to happen. And so, they're going to be affected. And they're under a compact. I wonder what that, what that's going to do with that compact. They're with the Colorado and they didn't get any water. They were told this year, because there was a drought, that they weren't getting any water. They were, they were not getting their full amount of water that was, that's allocated for them under the compact. So, there's a lot of issues that I think that everybody needs to take a step back and study it and really know what is going to, how everybody's going to be affected. And I agree with Ron, if it was coming from your district, Mr. Romero, would you allow the transfer?
Right.
With Mr. Blanken, Mr. Barone, would you allow that transfer? Because it affects your people. It affects your constituents. And the same thing with Mr. Duran. And under, we're adjudicated, but I know Penasco isn't. And so, what happens there? So, there's a lot, a lot of things that can, that are, are not what are, they seem to be, but I think we need to all look back and say, okay, let's study this. How is it going to affect every single person up there? Because in Cuesta, the water rights are adjudicated. People own those waters. They own their waters. And I'm not sure that, I know that in Cuesta, people are not in favor of this. They're not. That's why the Asequia Association protested it.
Mr. Chairman, we've spent an hour on this and obviously, it is not enough time. And I want to thank Ms. Matthews and Mr. Gardner and Mayor Garcia for the discussion that, that we have had today. And I would really like for us to, you know, obviously, the deadline, some sort of deadline has, has passed sometime, a very early part of, of September. And I am not sure as to what we can do at this point. But, Mr. Chairman, I would really like for this Commission to create a, a day that we can meet and work-study and look at this again. Obviously, there are a lot of questions, going back to even the ownership of those water rights. And that, to me, would be the, the simplest way to, to tackle this and probably the least expensive, even though that is very expensive in itself. But I would like to suggest that, Mr. Chairman.
I, that would be a good recommendation if we could get maybe somebody also here from the State Engineers' Office. And I think Mike Hammond was probably one of the persons that did a presentation at that meeting also on the abeta settlement. Because I think there's, might be some misunderstandings on how the water is really allocated. I don't, I don't think it affects the asequias itself because you're drying up land that was irrigatable before. You're just drying up the land, you're not drying up the, the water that flows through the asequia. So, there's a bunch of questions that need to be answered. I, I think there's some misunderstandings, maybe not, because they're actually drilling deep water wells that will, I guess, supply water to houses. And, and that's a concern is, you know, you start putting single-family wells next to septic tanks, eventually, you start drinking the stuff that's going into the septic tank. And we want to make sure that that's not happening in our community also. And I think that's part of the creation of the water abeta settlement. So, I think there's a number of questions that need to be answered. So, if we could get that fairly soon, I think it would be advantageous for people in the community, ourselves, to become more further educated on this situation. And, and I'll allow a few more comments from people that haven't commented and then we'll, we'll move on with getting this taken care of.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just respond very briefly to Mayor Garcia?
Sure.
Thank you. And, and really, like the chairman just said, you know, if, if these transfers do occur, that, that's not going to affect the, the supply on Cabresto. You know, obviously, the asequias there are going to depend upon the weather and, and the paper transfer would, would have no effect on that asequia. And I know it just feels like Cuesta's the one getting hit time and again. The, the fact is, that's where the water rights are available. And so, when El Prado is shopping, or Rancho's is shopping, or any other entity is shopping for water rights, that's the natural place because of that historical abundance. And, and I know it's, you know, it's, it's a scary thing in, in ways. And, and so naturally, the community is, is gonna want to take a good, hard look at it. But, you know, there, there is no direct bearing. And again, the deep aquifers are the supply and the only way the entities can use the supply in the deep aquifers is if they have actually purchased the paper rights.
Well, I have something else, Commissioner Blankenhorn. When, when the wells in, in Sunshine Valley were being used, the wells in Cerro would dry up. Cerro cannot afford to put water lines or wells for everybody in Cerro, okay? It's too widespread. There's just too many people. So, you know, all these transfers affect in some way or another. I can tell you that when those wells were, were being used, the wells in Cerro would dry up. People didn't have that water. Because all that, all those wells, which I believe is, there's 40 of them, were being used, but there is no water for the, for the people. And it's really important for people to have drinking water and safe drinking water. But if, if we can't afford it, if the small communities cannot afford a water system that supplies water for everyone, well, I mean, what do we do?
I know. And in some ways, these transfers take that burden off because then those deep wells can no longer be used to irrigate those lands. So, in some ways, that takes the burden off Cerro.
I'm not quite sure. I, I mean, somebody's got to convince me really well that this is, is, is not going to happen.
And Mayor Garcia, I think you hit that right on the head. Safe drinking water. Thank you. Mr. Torres?
Commissioners, Chairman, I'm a member of the Water Board and I was one of the ones that opposed or that was in support of the transfer. This is a real complex situation, very complex. And I think it started out with the state allocating more water than possibly we may have in the state. I don't know how that happened, but it, something beyond our control. We're very fortunate that we have the pueblo here to per se protect what we have. They've got a lot of influence overall and I think that was one of the reasons that the state indicated that they had so much water. But ultimately, we don't have the, the paper water that they're claiming. And that's, and that's a big issue and that's, we need to bring that to forefront and, and to bring that out to, to the public to be aware of what's going on. I think we're all in agreement that we don't want to lose water rights anywhere, whether it's in the county or in the state or within communities. We need to work together in a sense that our, our domestic water users and associations need to be vigilant in acquiring or, or asking for the water rights. When, when you become a member of a mutual domestic, you're asked to give up the water rights for your well on that house. I don't know if these, these domestic associations are, are asking for those water rights. And therefore, when the state, the state adjudicated these water rights, they may already have those water rights and they didn't know that. And those water rights ultimately still belong to the landowner. And those water rights ultimately still belong to the landowner as their agricultural water rights or whatnot. And so that needs to be explored, in a sense. The other issue is the Abeta. That's, that's huge. That's huge for, for northern New Mexico. If we, for some reason, as Mr. Blankenhorn mentioned, fail to abide by some of that, we, we stand to lose the negotiation that's been for the last 20 years. We stand to lose that, which is very huge. We don't want to lose it. We need to work within our community and our association. We don't want to let these water transfers either, because it may affect you eventually. But in this case, we need to work together. I agree that these water transfers, as Ron eloquently put, he is pretty dead-on as to how, gave you a pretty good picture of what it should be. But unfortunately, we have a parameter to work with right now. We, we have to do it. We have to work with what we've got. And that's what it set, the Abeta settlement, that's what we've got to work with. So unfortunately, for that to work, we need to get some transfers somewhere. And, and because of the, the situation, and, and Mr. Commissioner Blankenhorn stated, we don't know what the implications is on, on those deep wells. We don't know. And that's what he's saying, and if we have, we don't have the, the information that's going to require to know the knowledge of what the implication of that is. I don't know what, how deep the wells are in Cuesta for, when they were drilling, when they were, well, when they were cultivating the, the lands in Cerro. I don't know how deep those wells are. I'm thinking that those wells are shallow, just like all the wells in, the drinking wells were shallow.
Not at the top of the world.
Maybe not that one, where they're not, they, they go down to 1,000 feet?
Those are the wells that she's talking about. Top of the world.
How, how deep do those go?
I don't know.
And that's, that's, that's a shallow well. If they're 350, that's a shallow well. Which could be true, which would be true. And, but they're hitting a shallow aquifer. The wells that they're talking here, we're going 1,000 feet. We have no knowledge, no, no documentation of what affects. So it's very clear to say that yes, any domestic well in the Cerro era, Cerro area, would definitely go dry when they're pumping the 300-foot wells, if they're using that same aquifer.
40.
Right. And they would, ultimately, and that makes sense to me, that there's, they would go dry. But that doesn't give us any documentation that when we start drilling these deep wells to make this Abeta settlement happen, we don't know the implication of what that's going to do, and it's going to give us that, that information that we need. But definitely, as commissioners, you really definitely need to look at all the aspects of this, and, and, and not to regress on something that we've worked so hard to come across, which is the Abeta settlement. There's, there's a lot of good things there. But we're in the forefront of this water issue. I think that we need to, to send a message, not only to the local people, but to, to individuals who are not knowledgeable as to what Mother Nature produces. We just need to be vigilant in that, and not let what we've worked so hard to, to be undone because of a decision that the commission has to make, and, and set precedence because of the information that, that we don't have and that we need. But ultimately, we do need to protect those watersheds, as Ron Gardner ultimately said. We don't know the implications of this. Right now, we're working with paper water. We can, ultimately, as Esther said, there's water only that Mother Nature produces, and that's all we can do. As, as an irrigator myself, I only can irrigate if there's water that comes off that mountain. If there isn't, that's done. That's it. We don't want our water leaving the state. One of the things that we need to start considering is, how do we store our waters? Do we start, need to look at building some dams? Because when we have those snowfalls that we used to have in the 60s, and 70s, and early 40s, I guess, we used to have a lot of snow. And that water would just go down the Rio Grande and down to Texas. And as a consequence of, we lost a lot of those water rights to Texas because they were, ultimately, their state sold them to Texas. And that's because they, they saw water coming out. But the reality was, we, the water was going down the Rio Grande, and we, up northern New Mexico, we didn't, weren't vigilant enough, and, and to see the future, to start building some dams to protect our water rights. And that's what we need to start looking at, is how can we protect our water rights? And in the time of drought, start looking at building some dams, or whatever it takes to, to preserve those water rights here in, in northern New Mexico. So it is a real complex situation, and I think we just need to work together and not go backwards. So in order for all this process to go forward, we just need to work with our parameters, which is what the state's given us. The Abeta water settlement, that's given us, the, the amount of water that the state's already adjudicated, that's given. Unless the state does something to back, to go back on that, we really have no choice but to work with those parameters.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Romero?
Thank you, Mr. Torres. The, the water rights transfer, if it is successful from Ortega to the Taos Valley, where is it going to go?
Oh, it's going to go to the Arroyo Seco Water Association, Asequia Association, for their...
What's the specific, it's the mutual domestic?
No, no, it's for irrigation.
Irrigation. So is there a specific ditch or river that it's going to?
Rio de Cerro.
Rio de Cerro. And you're a member of, of the Rio de Cerro?
I am.
You're also on the advisory?
I am.
And you voted in favor of the transfer of these water rights?
Yes, but it, it's not so much, because I, I'm a lifelong resident, I'm a, I grew up here, I'm, I'm very well aware of what the water situation is.
Should, should you have maybe recused yourself because you, it's not a conflict of interest, you don't see it?
It could have been a conflict of interest, but it wasn't that. Our guidelines, basically, when you look at the guidelines that the committee put together, they're ultimately designed to, to say, we oppose everything, the way it's written. You have no, when it's, because it affects everything. You're absolutely right. It, it affects everything, and it, rarely will it affect anything in a positive way, only to the person that is, that is going to be a beneficial use to it. That's the only positive. But other, everything else in that criteria that we met...
Would, would you agree that there's too many unknowns, including the ownership of these water rights?
Well, one of the things that, that's an unknown, but that's not for you or I to decide. First of all, I, I believe in your right, if it was your water rights, or if it was your family's water rights, and they chose to sell it because they had a death in the family, or they had someone in the hospital, they needed the money. We don't know their circumstances. But I do know one thing, is that they have the right to do with what they want with their properties, whatever that may be, whether it's water rights, or it's land. As an individual, you have that right. And that's something that we also need to take into consideration, is that these individuals have rights. And I'm a big proponent of people who have these rights, that they shouldn't be taken away from us, because government entities want it for free, or whatever, or, or because they're forced to do something, and they're forced to, to maintain, not be able to sell it. So that's the other issue that I failed to mention, is that rights of the individuals.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Filke, and then we'll go cut it off, and we will, we will, we will have a work-study, and we'll get all these questions and all the other comments answered, and I think then we can come together. Okay, okay. Yeah, I know you have a response, Ron, and I'll let you with that response, but go ahead, Mr. Filke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And your name for the record, please.
Neil Filke. Commissioners, I was, I was on, on the committee as a volunteer for, for writing the Public Welfare and Conservation Statement for the Regional Water Plan, which included all of Taos County, not just, not just the valley. The county was not at the table for Abeta at all, and should not be concerned about Abeta obligations. Abeta does not circumvent the Regional Water Plan, and it does not circumvent state water law, which seems to imply that, Abeta seems to totally ignore that, that we have these other things that are in place. My main concern on the committee was the transfer of water between watersheds, and particularly protecting Penasco Valley, because I knew this was coming. And the last time this issue came up, John Painter promised, or the county, the commission asked him to supply documentation of his allegations to justify this transfer. And I knew he never would, and that he would stall and stall, and it, and he hasn't, as far as I know, provided it. I have no issue with Abeta, except the federal government throwing a tremendous amount of money to further commodify water. The water doesn't go anywhere. It's still, it's still there. They just relinquish the right to put it to use there, and transfer it to someplace where it's already over, where it's already overused. And I asked the, well, oh, a lot of the parties, all the parties at Abeta, were also parties for the Regional Water Plan. We worked parallel. And we did everything we could not to interfere with Abeta at all. But you guys are commissioners, and you're commissioners for the entire county, not, not representing just special interests. I'm really disturbed by Commissioner Blankenhorn's conflict of interest, and his personal relationship with John Painter, which I don't know whether he's disclosed yet or not. But, I mean, this is, I asked, I asked the assessor last week, if, if water is transferred off a property, does that, and if that property had, received an agricultural assessment, does that, when that transfer happens, does that agricultural assessment get removed? She didn't have an answer for me on that. It would also devalue the property as compared with adjacent properties that do have water rights. And I think that, that any of these transfers that do get approved needs to go to the county clerk and, and write a new deed to indicate that, that this property no longer has water rights, to protect any future buyers of that property. I don't think I have anything newer to add.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I don't have any relationship, any special relationship with John Painter. I've known him for years. There's no friendship there. I definitely do not appreciate your implication that my policy decision here is in any way affected by a friendship.
You are selling Abeta, and you should be selling the Regional Water Plan. That's your job. Thank you.
Well, you don't have to tell me my job. But the fact of the matter is, I'm just going on record, I have no special relationship with John Painter. My position on this is based upon my true belief that the Abeta water settlement is important for Taos County, and that we need to do what we can to support it.
But it doesn't circumvent the, the Regional Water Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Filke.
Thank you.
Ron, go ahead, and then we'll move on. I know you were addressing, I think, a concern or a question that Commissioner Duran had...
Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to maybe offer some solutions going forward. As a Water Advisory Board member, a map to start our process would be very helpful. We, we scurried one together this time, so we can physically look at the piece of land that, the transfer from point to the transfer to point. We worked on that late in our third meeting on this transfer, so a map would be very helpful. But in the course of decision-making, we're looking at the evaluation of 10 criteria under the Public Welfare Statement. It talks about water supply, conjunctive management culture, agrarian culture, the environment. So there's 10 criteria that we're giving an evaluation on. I've, I've shared with Manager Archuleta a matrix, that when we're looking at this, these 10 criteria, there's, there's three things that, that we can actually give a recommendation on, whether it has an impact, or no impact, or it isn't clear. So under each 10, we have three different alternatives. If, if it isn't a known impact, or no impact, and we have a question, then we'd like to be able to pose the question for the commission to pursue. And so I think this is not a black and white decision, not just a thumbs up or a thumbs down, protest or not protest. I think what you really need is a commission, is to look at those 10 criteria, and, and way we vote it, or way we evaluate it, and then come to your own decision. One thing that would very much help the county, particularly in the Abeta, is our own hydrologic data. Aquifer mapping's been done in most of the county. I know there's the Taos Water Model, and there's a component that allows for updating. If so, then the county already has a relationship with the Bureau of Geology. It would be great to actually do aquifer mapping, so we knew our water resources from the mountain to the Rio Grande. It doesn't just apply to the Abeta, it's going to apply to all future water applications coming to this county in the next five, 10, 15 years. Development was hot on her heels before the economy went down. Let me just point out one Public Welfare Statement application. Intel, when it wanted to increase its water use, found a defunct asequia down near Socorro and bought water rights, and tried to transfer it up, based on a Public Welfare Statement. It was denied by the courts. So this is the same kind of process. If there's enough money, they'll go look anywhere. Once again, Intel found an asequia that had gone defunct, it didn't have bylaws, didn't have a commission, somebody sold them the water rights, private property, they were going to transfer uphill to money to Intel. That transfer did not prevail. So these three tools that I offered, a matrix, a map, an aquifer mapping, would help you make these decisions. It would take a little more pressure off our advisory board. You could look at our findings, see the qualitative implications of a transfer, and come to your own decision.
And Ron, how would these be paid for?
What's that?
The mapping and all this that you're asking for?
It's been done.
Well, in the case of the counties that we're competing with, they go out and they pay for a hydrologist. In the case of our aquifer mapping, we've done it through partnerships. The Healy Foundation has put $100,000 into that program this year. Three-fifths of our county on, on the east side of the river has been done...
Some of it has been done already, I know that, but...
You know, it's, it's about a penny on a dollar if you were going out to the private sector and get a, getting a hydrologist, kind of like the county of Santa Fe and Rio Riba. They have people that are working on this full-time. They have attorneys that are working on just the water full-time. So they go into their pocket because they know the value of water.
Thank you, Ron. So, thank you again.
I could have a copy?
Yeah, we have. We can get a date here and make sure that the Water Advisory Board is advised, and, and we put out some, something in the PIO, so that we can, you know, people are aware that we're going to be doing this, and, and get dates from the state engineers and, and other people that we think are appropriate to answer some of these questions.
Tentatively, Mr. Chairman, we're looking at October 29th. We'll get confirmations from everybody on that, and make sure that we get the word out.
And it would be based on the state engineer and the other people's schedule. So thank you, and thank the Water Advisory Committee. Appreciate it, so...
Chairman, so move for a five-minute break.
Okay, we have a motion for a...
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Thank you.
I was going to... I'm up next to my... Drink more water, I don't want to sit here bouncing for 1:15. The boots filling up.
Are we at department matters?
No, no, no.
Yeah. Commissioners, do we have a motion to come back?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. We'll go ahead and move on to department matters, discuss consideration, decision regarding the following legal matters... the following legal matters. Mr. Malone, our county attorney, in the discussion regarding E-91 joint powers agreement. Mr. Malone?
Chairman, Commissioners, I wanted to, uh, come before you to get some guidance. Let me give you a quick background. Uh, as you know, we achieved something fairly historic by entering into the memorandum of understanding with the town to set a framework for moving forward on the JPA one week ago today. And I've left copies of the MOU with each of you, just in case we need reference to it. I've spoken with Mr. James probably three or four times since then, and we've scheduled our first meeting for, uh, for Monday, Monday morning, to start trying to, uh, hammer out a JPA to find out whether we can agree on all of the terms. The MOU indicated that Mr. James and I, and including representatives from Cuesta and from the Ski Valley, should try to go forward with that process. And I want to be sure that you understand that in very broad terms, I need parameters from you. I can't just go make up the terms of the agreement. And so I've identified four things based on my discussions with Mr. James and my review of the, uh, San Juan County JPA that I need guidance from the commission on, so that when I meet with Mr. James on Monday, I'm not in a position of just making up the substance of the deal. The lawyer's role is to craft it, put proper words to it, so that it really says what the parties involved want it to say, but the parties involved have to determine what the substance of, of the deal is going to be. And so, I, like I said, I've identified four items that the MOU either doesn't address at all, or addresses only in part, or that questions have been raised, for example, at the meeting a week ago. And the very first one is, how are the, uh, votes under the JPA going to be distributed? How are we going to determine how the members of the JPA cast votes, what the weight of those votes are? Obviously, that's a terribly crucial and basic part of any JPA. And I want to outline for you what I think are kind of the, um, the polar positions and the middle ground on that. Uh, and quite frankly, I just want to tell you upfront, I don't think that the polar positions, the extremes, if you will, stand any chance of getting agreed to. The county would object to one extreme, the town would object to the other extreme, and so I think the middle ground is, is the most likely fruitful source of agreement. But I want to paint the picture for you so you understand the context for the question. You know, at one extreme, it would just be one man, one vote, that each entity just has one vote. And obviously, there would be a situation there where, um, two of the entities, the Ski Valley and Cuesta, that have a much smaller financial interest in what's going on, um, would have an equal vote to the larger parties. Um, and so that's, that's one extreme. At the other extreme, voting could be based entirely on call volume. It could be based on, um, distributing votes based on the amount of volume of 911 calls that, um, are generated. And if it were done that way, the county alone would hold the majority of the votes. And I think you know that the town would never go along with just giving the majority always to the county. And so in between those two extremes, there's, um, middle ground where some of the votes can be distributed, one man, one vote. One concept would be that each party, each of the four partners has one vote, and that in addition, additional votes are distributed on the basis of call volume. That's an example. Uh, it seems to me that, and again, I, I want to make clear, I'm not asking for this commission to hammer out all the nuts and bolts details. I just need general guidance from you so that I don't come back to you with an agreement that's just dead on arrival. And so, um, the, Rick Bellis, uh, had engaged in exchanges with the town over the course of many, many months. Um, one of the, um, uh, versions of a JPA that he had proposed along the way, uh, had a total of seven votes. Four votes, uh, one vote for each party, the other three votes divided up on the basis of, of call volume. And so if, if, what I'd like this commission to do is to give me, um, a sense of, and a vote would be appropriate, just in general terms, whether I should go forward with a distribution, talking to Mr. James about a distribution of the votes based part on one party, one vote, and part on a, uh, additional votes distributed based on call.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, let me ask you this question, Mr. Malone. Use, okay, these votes would come, like, from where? Okay.
Tauski Valley, Cuesta?
Okay. But the county, okay, would, okay, let me ask you this question, first this. The county probably would have the sheriff, no? That'd be one of them? Or not really?
The, the question that you're asking, Commissioner, has to do with who would be on the board. And the MOU, um, basically looked to two different boards, and that's a question I was going to get to in a minute, but let me just answer that now. The, the concept is that there is a, um, I'll call it the board that directly represents the parties. That is, each of the parties would, um, uh, have their own representative on the board that has to decide the things that only the governmental entities can decide. For example, um, there, there needs to be one group, and call it the fiscal board, for lack of a better description, one group that makes decisions about budgets and then has to present that back to the, uh, government entities. Because the government entities can't abrogate their responsibility for appropriations. That ultimately has to reside with the government entities. But there, in the documents that have been exchanged thus far, there's been a technical board, which would be made up of the various, um, users of the 911 system, the police chief, the sheriff, EMS, fire, et cetera, those parties. That's not what I'm talking about when I'm talking about the votes. I'm talking about the board that is made up directly of the, of the political bodies. And each political body would, would, uh, appoint its representative to that board. And, and so that's the board that would have to make, just like this commission, for example, has to approve contracts, just like, uh, this commission, um, has a whole variety of, has to decide whether to enter a lawsuit or not. Those things would reside with the board that is the, um, direct representatives of the political body. What I'm addressing is how the votes would be distributed on that board, because that's the board that's going to be making the, the important substantive decisions.
So.
I don't know if that answers your question. I hope it did.
Yeah, 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 no, no, you answered it, but, okay, then, uh, then the town would have one vote, county would have one vote, Ski Valley one vote, and Cuesta one vote, right?
And in addition, what I'm describing to you as a middle ground is that there would be an additional group of votes, uh, distributed on the basis of call volume.
And basically, Commissioner, it would be a weighted vote.
Exactly.
And, and we use that weighted vote in the RTD when we vote, depending on what your contribution is, or what, how you're paying based on call volume, like you were alluding to. And I, I think, I think, Commissioner.
See, see, where I'm coming from is that I'm looking at it, that the county's got to have control. You know, the, you know, I don't agree with the JPA that everybody has a vote, because we're going to be in the same situation that we're at the landfill. Who controls over there if it ain't the town? The county don't have no say-so over there. You know what I mean? And what I'm looking at is having the county the control of the vote, because that's what we need here. Because this commission has already voted once. There's three votes to do votes, that we were going to move on our own, whether it took six months, eight months, or a year. Once we have our deal in place, we're abandoning ship. And if we don't have that vote on this JPA, this JPA is going to hold us to stay over there for, what, two years? Or for how long?
Well, if, if the J, if we didn't have the votes on the JPA, and if it were set up so that it was just one entity, one vote, to use the first example that you gave, it could, it could bind us for any number of years to the Kit Carson. And that's part of the reason that I'm saying to you that there ought to be some middle ground of weighted votes, so that our financial interest in the, um, operation is reflected. And that's what I'm asking for guidance from, from this commission.
Let me ask this question. Our, Mr. Sanchez back there, our Office of Emergency Management, he's the one that is in charge throughout the whole county, right? Or does the town have somebody like him in place?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, no, he's in charge. He's the OEM for Taos County. That's correct. Yes.
So, the town, say there was a disaster, he would be the man in charge with, throughout the county?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Or if something happened at the, within the town, he's the man that's in control, right?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, so then, uh, my suggestion is, be on board, one vote from each, every entity, plus the county that's having two, and two people within, and two other people within the town, from Taos County. That's why you put, no? Because if the county ain't going to have control, I, you know, I don't agree to, no JPA, and I don't agree to.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Romero?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Malone, we had talked about the Farmington Agreement, um, JPA, and I'm wondering if you all have, have looked at that particular document. I'd like to certainly see it as to how their voting rights are structured. And I, I agree with, with Commissioner Dudon on the fact that, based on experience that we have had, um, although the town has, was at one time the major, uh, contributor to trash at the landfill, um, we pretty much had the least amount of, of say-so, um, when it came to, to voting, um, structure. And, and that's because the town was, um, always able to, um, say, manipulate the vote so that it had, uh, its vote present, along with all the smaller entities, um, of Red River and Cuesta and Tauski Valley, and even to some extent, Taos Pueblo. So, I agree with Commissioner Dudon also in that we need to structure it so that, um, Taos County is, is no longer the, the minority with regards to this, uh, to the joint powers agreement, if there is going to be one executed and with the, uh, operation of E-911. Taos County does have the responsibility. All other counties have the responsibility of, of being able to, um, run, manage its own 911 system. Um, I believe there aren't any municipalities that I'm aware of that are in fact, uh, maybe with the exception of Red River, um, in the state of New Mexico, that handle their own 911. It's, it's usually a responsibility of the county. I, I like the idea that we do have to have, uh, an advisory board that is made up of individuals like Mr. Sanchez, uh, who's not only, I believe, our acting fire chief, but also our, our emergency management coordinator. Um, and, and he is, uh, Taos County overall, including all of the municipalities, if there is an emergency, or, um, a, a need to be able to, to deal with fire situations. So, um, I really feel that, uh, we need to structure it so that Taos County, um, and I hate to sound greedy, is, uh, has the majority of the votes, um, at all times, being that we're also going to put the, the largest chunk of money into this. If, if we move forward with what the commission had already instructed, uh, staff way back in June in, in buying our own equipment, um, I really believe that that would be the best way to go, in that we have to have the best equipment possible to be able to, um, answer those 911 calls. Um, but how are we going to get other smaller entities to contribute, uh, their share of a million and a half dollars? Taos County is now poised to do that. We're, we're, we've allocated those monies through our budgeting process to, to be able to buy that equipment and to be able to set up our own building. Is the town going to want to come in on that end of, of this agreement? And would Cuesta and Tauski Valley be able to afford, um, that amount of money, their share in that amount of money? I, I don't think so, um, considering the fact also that we've also committed to, to Cuesta, um, so far, to allow them in, um, without, um, any cost, at least for the first two years. Um, from what I understand, Tauski Valley is, is willing to pay their fair share, but they certainly feel that the amount of money based on their call volume is, is, is definitely not something that is, that they're willing to continue.
Commissioner Romero, just to very quickly answer your question about the, uh, San Juan, yes, I have reviewed the San Juan JPA, and it is, um, in, in terms of what you've focused on, which is, um, votes tied to the share of expenditure, the, the amount of money invested in the project, um, it's not really applicable, because they ended up, um, adopting a gross receipts tax to fund their operation. Um, so it, there's just, we can't really draw from their example for this, and that's one of the reasons that I'm coming to this body and asking for, for your guidance. Um, and just for me to ask you a question, Commissioner, um, when you say you don't want to see the county to be in a minority, um, are you saying that we need to have a majority of the votes just in, in us? You know, without combining with any one of the other entities?
Being that we are going to allocate, allocate the largest amount of money towards this endeavor, and the fact that it is in fact our, our responsibility to provide E-911 as a county that oversees the, the entire area of Taos County, I, I believe that, um, we, we should have the, the larger share of, if we're going to have the largest share of the, the expense, that we, we need to be able to have the largest share of the vote as well, somehow.
But does that mean 50% plus, or just the largest share?
Well, there was, there was a, a breakdown that had been discussed, where Taos County would have three votes, the town of Taos would have two, um, I believe Tauski Valley and Cuesta would each have one. Sort of agreeable to, to that breakdown.
So not a majority, but, but.
Very close to the majority.
The largest single quantity.
Right.
Mr. Chairman? Mr.? Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm in agreement with, uh, Commissioner Romero there. You know, really, if any single entity has more than 50%, it's no longer a joint power agreement, it's a sole power agreement, and so that, that, there's no sense in, in even going any further there. But with that 3-2-1-1 formula, I think, uh, Rick, Rick Bellis was, uh, maybe the original architect of that. That would mean that we would need one ally to have the majority, and if the town was going to carry a vote, they would need two. Um, I think it's important to, um, make sure that you only get a vote if you contribute. And so, um, I know that the Ski Valley is, is willing to contribute. I think that if that were the case, Cuesta would also be willing to contribute, um, so that they would have a vote also. And again, you know, like you say, we're not going to come up with a particular formula for you here today, but, uh, something along those lines, where we have a, a weighted advantage over the town based upon our expenditures, but recognizing that no single entity can have more than 50% is, um, is what I believe is, is a workable solution.
Mr. Chairman, I, I want to hear more about the weighted vote that, that you have with regards to the RTD, and how does that work?
And basically, like you were mentioning, it would be based on, whatever we based on, if we're based on, uh, what we put on, put into it, if we're, uh, dollars, or if it's based on, uh, call volume, either way, and that 3-2-1-1 vote would basically, uh, be looted back to the same weighted vote that would, that would, I think, would work for us. alluded back to the same weighted vote that would, I think, would work for us, because if we were basing it on percentage, 55% or 45% of the total budget, I think that would be appropriate. I think that's, and I think the way we wrote the MOU, which was alluded to several times in our meeting, that if we don't come together on the JPA, then there's a lot of things that this MOU referred to that brings the, I guess, the responsibility onto the county, the way I understand. So I know that was alluded to several times in our, in our meeting of the MOU that was agreed upon, and I think, you know, that weighted vote that you talked about, Commissioner, the 3-2-1-1 is the way to go. I think if we move forward in that fashion, I think the true JPA will give that authority to Ellen and the different people that are part of that JPA, to determine what is best for Taos County residents and the town residents, because the town residents basically are county residents, because they live in District One, in the county. And that would give us the tools that we need to move this JPA forward, and create, and decide whether they want to go to stay in the command center, or they want to move to our own building, and it would give us the necessary votes and the necessary tools to move that forward.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you have gotten this far along in the discussions, but I think that it would end up, our voting share would be in the county manager. The county manager would be the representative who would cast the vote on behalf of Taos County. Mr. Sanchez would not cast a vote, but he, along with the others, would be a critical component to the operation of the JPA, because they would be providing information to our county manager, and whoever the other entities appointed for their, to make their decisions. You know, and obviously, these are really important decisions, and they're gonna include equipment, operations, location, everything that's critical about what we're trying to do now, to finally set up a dispatch E-911 that's gonna work for the community.
And Commissioner Romero, the way we vote too, is you just, if everybody has a representative there, the Taos, Ski Valley, the Cuesta, Taos County, Town of Taos, and basically, it's not that you have three people there, but the person voting actually has three votes. So you don't have, we don't have, you know, three people there. If we designate our county manager to be our voting delegate, he would, when he cast his vote, he would cast three votes. The person that represents the town would cast two votes, and then they would be disseminated that way. So, and that's exactly the way we do it at the RTD.
So as far as the rest of the joint powers agreement, we would form two various boards, one that handles the budgets, and this is the board that votes, and then with Taos County being the fiscal agent of the system.
Well, the MOU provides that if a JPA is agreed upon, the JPA will vote upon who will be the fiscal agent, and where the location will be. And that voting mechanism, if it's ultimately agreed to by the town, and our other two partners, that we just talked about, the one that each of you addressed, that voting mechanism would be the voting mechanism by which the decision would be made as to who the fiscal agent would be.
Let me ask this question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
How long before you and the town attorney write this JPA?
Well, we're gonna meet for the first time Monday. And just to give you my big picture view, and just tell you, I think my big picture view varies from his. I think he wanted it signed, sealed, and delivered yesterday. I mean, and I, we provided in the MOU for 90 days, because in response to questions from this commission, I gave you my opinion, that to do something like this properly is gonna require a great deal of careful crafting by the lawyers, and it may require several times where the lawyers have to come back to their respective bodies and say, "We've reached loggerheads on this. Do we call it quits, or do we try to get past that loggerheads?" So I think it's, I think we're gonna be using up not just a few days or a week, it's gonna take some time.
Month, two months.
Easily.
Easily. Then where does it put us, Mr. Archuleta, on the process of dealing with Motorola to begin purchasing and installing stuff? See, 'cause there's gonna be a hangup for us, 'cause say that we don't have the vote, and we already got everything here. You know what I mean?
Commissioner Duran, there's a provision in the memorandum of understanding that if there is no JPA agreed to in the 90 days, we could declare it 60 days and say it's gone, but if by the end of 90 days, we don't have the JPA, there's a provision that the services provided by the town will continue on the same terms that they're currently providing them, for an additional 90 days beyond what they initially said the termination would be. So we don't lose any time.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Duran, what you'll see in front of you today is actually some of the infrastructure work that's already gonna be, we're gonna start on that. It's gonna, we're spending about $387,000, approximately, off the top of my head. That'll bring in the antenna, that'll bring in some of the different switches, and so we're moving forward with that, we're running a parallel track on that. What will be reported to the commission today is that, again, we have Forest Service who's wanting to move into that facility if we decide not to bring the 911 there, so we have to put the infrastructure in place anyway, and so you'll see that later on in the agenda today.
Okay.
So none of what we're buying at this time is, I think it's important for the public to know, Mr. Chairman, and County Manager Archuleta, none of what we're purchasing at this time, as far as the equipment is concerned, is going to waste. There is going to be some future use of it. If not immediately, it'll definitely be used by Taos County to some extent. From what I understand, Mr. Sanchez explaining to us, especially the use of the tower, will be put to use almost immediately, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, that is correct. We have actually two plans in that aspect. First one is, again, BLM Forest Service would be the primary occupants at that point, and would use that. The second one would be that we would possibly move our OEM office to that facility, and have it co-located with this actual room, in case of an emergency, so that we could, you know, transmit, broadcast, whatever we need to do out of that facility also.
Mr. Chairman, I think there may be another way to look at it, is if Taos County, if everybody could agree that Taos County is the owner of the PSAP system, if Taos County will be the fiscal agent, if Taos County will operate out of its planning department, and build the system as to how staff has suggested, and then bringing in these other entities as partners, without there having to be a vote, that would be the ideal, that would be great. And I don't know that they would agree to that.
Mr. Romero, that is, that approach could end up happening if the negotiations for the JPA break down.
Right.
But that's not the approach that the MOU describes.
Right.
So it's certainly a possibility, but it's not what I'll be pursuing with Mr. James, based on the MOU.
Right. But if the time came to vote on various issues, if it was structured, you know, on that 3-2-1-1, with the full awareness of the fact that Taos County was in control of the building and the PSAP system, to that extent, to making sure that our repeater stations are not being taken down, or torn apart, or worn out by the elements, because that currently, under the current JPA, has not happened. No one maintained them until our staff was made aware of the fact that they needed work, and Taos County went on its own and repaired those, and nobody, from what I understand, has volunteered any of their budget money to be able to help with that. Taos County has taken it on its own.
Others are more familiar with the details on that than I am, Commissioner Romero, but I do know the broad framework, and that is that there was an MOU with the town where we took over the repeaters, and now we've taken on the financial responsibility for them.
Right. So...
So is it, there's three other points, and I'd like to move on to those. I think I've got the sense, but is it, can I have a quick vote, that the idea of weighted vote, where we have a bigger vote than any of the other partners, but not the majority, is the consensus?
Make that motion.
Well, explain it furthermore, how will it work?
An example, an example would be...
I'm a little puzzled, especially since Commissioner Blankenhorn is agreeing with me, so...
You know what you're against.
Why he's agreeing with me, so...
Well, let me use, I'm not saying that it's gonna be exactly crafted this way, but the effect, let me use the example that several of you have mentioned of 3-2-1-1. In that situation, if Taos County had the support of any one of the other partners...
It would put it on the majority.
That would have a majority. And that's what I'm talking about. Some mechanism, whether it's 3-2-1-1, or 3.76...
4-2-1-1.
Or 4-2-1-1, or some fractional, or some fractional vote. I mean, but where if Taos County and one of the other partners agreed, that would be a majority. That's...
And that's what I said, but you're trusting him and not me? We're both lawyers, you know?
Well, that's just it.
Is that clarified, Commissioner?
But Mr. Chairman, see, since we're moving forward, you know, the way I look at it, we gotta have the majority, 'cause, you know, there's some swinging and dealing out there, you know what I mean? What if we do lose out on one of them votes? And we got all this equipment in place, that the JPA holds us, too, and we gotta stay over there for three or four years, you know?
It's a good point, Commissioner, which is why we should wait before we make these investments, for the JPA to make the decision.
But the thing about is, Commissioner Blankenhorn, see, this commission has already moved forward, that we are going to our planning department. That's the vote. That vote has never been rescinded, or whatever.
No, no, but...
That is the decision. So the thing about it is, I think what you ought to do is go out to the town and say, "The county's gonna have this number of votes, we're gonna have the majority, and that's the way it's gonna be," and they don't agree with...
What we're currently working under, what they're currently working under is the vote by this commission that adopted the MOU, and so you can't ignore that, Commissioner Duran. You know, there is, there has been a majority vote of this commission, which has instructed, which has entered into a memorandum of understanding with the other entities. And to the extent that that ends up with a different result, so be it. I mean, that is what we're currently working under. Currently working under a memorandum of understanding.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malone, you have a meeting Thursday or Friday?
Monday.
Monday? With Mr. James from the town?
Correct.
And so I would be interested in hearing as to what he has to propose.
Well, I've already explained in the first comments that I made, that what the town wants is one man, one vote. You know, obviously, you guys are not gonna go along with that.
Right. Yeah.
And I think that weighted vote is the way to go. I think it puts that, it facilitates what we're trying to move forward with.
Yeah, you know, we've spent 10 months working on this already. You know, every time I think about it, and pray about it, and we have to make a decision, the bottom line is that I have made a commitment to the people of Taos County to do the best job possible for them. I took an oath of office. And so I always go back to that day, and making sure that we're making the right decision. And sometimes, it takes a while to give the correct answer. So I still feel that I cannot give you a definite answer this morning. I would like to look at the weighted vote idea. I have heavily depended on county staff to make the decisions thus far, and I would continue to do so, because I trust them, and listen to them as often as I can with regards to this issue. And I definitely believe that we're taking the right path by developing our own 911. Unfortunately, DFA came back with its response, you know, which I think was a memo from the governor telling us, you know, I took it as a threat, actually, but I honestly feel that the governor was worked on, you know, to carry that threat, and the message that DFA came back with. So I'm not gonna take it seriously, because the governor and everybody else that's in office can change from one day to the next. However, the commitment that we make to the people of Taos County to do the best possible for them is always there, on my end, and I'm sure of this, of this commission as well. Before I give a definite commitment, I want to look at making sure that the rights of Taos County are preserved and protected. And, I mean, we can certainly suggest the 3-2-1-1 vote.
Subject to further approval. All of this is subject to further approval. Let me make very clear, whatever you do today is giving me authority to go forward and negotiate in broad parameters, and you've made very clear, Commissioner Romero, that you don't view this vote as voting piecemeal on the exact nuts and bolts of the agreement. Ultimately, if Mr. James and I are able to craft an agreement that we both feel is within the parameters that our respective governing bodies have given us, it will come back to the governing bodies to make the final decision. There may be something that I didn't even think of, that I put in there, that I never talked to you about, that one or more of you looks at and says, "Bob, what are you, crazy to put that in there?" You know, that might happen.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, of course, we're all concerned with public safety, and we all want to do the best thing for our constituents. In my mind, of course, that path has always led to a regionalization. I don't want to personally have to make the decision about what equipment goes where. I want to delegate those decisions to a board that includes all of the entities involved, and it includes technical staff, technical staff that advises the board, and then the board makes the vote. So that's the direction that I have always sought. I think that we're on a path to that with this memorandum of understanding. And I also agree that there should be some weighting to the vote based on cost, and that no entity should have a vote unless they contribute.
Again, I was asking if I could get a quick motion that I can proceed on that basis, talking to Mr. James.
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion, that's just for you to negotiate with...
On the basis of a weighted vote, on the issue of how the votes are divvied up.
That's fine.
Oh, for the vote?
Yes. Yes.
The second issue, and I think the first one you addressed was probably the most difficult, hopefully we can move more quickly on the rest of them, but the second issue...
If not, I have this. If not, I have this.
Commissioner, would you share some of them with me?
Thanks to our clerk's office.
The second issue is that the MOU addressed in considerable detail how the budget would be set and allocated amongst the parties for two years. And it's really silent about what should happen after that. It seems to me that the JPA should incorporate what the MOU says about the first two years, which is the 55-45, subject to some incorporation of the other two entities. Because obviously, if it's 55-45, the other two entities are not contributing. And so that's part of the question I want to ask, is whether in talking to Mr. James, I should make the assumption that the other two entities will be contributing some amount. It doesn't... We don't have to determine the exact amount, but some amount. And that... But that the basic allocation of the expenses will follow the 55-45 that's contained in the MOU for two years. But after that, it seems to me we have to have a mechanism. We don't want a JPA that we then get two years down the road, and we're all fighting and voting on. Let's get that decided upfront. And my suggestion is that call volume based on the location of the incident, not where the call originated, but call volume based on the location of the incident, is a fair way to decide how things should be allocated. As we move through the years, the percentages may shift. I'm told by our technical folks that are involved in the 911 that we don't really currently have 100% accurate numbers that are based on where the location of the incident actually is. But that over that two-year period, hopefully, we will be able to get in place the kind of equipment that will make it easy to make that determination. So on this one, I have a fairly clear suggestion, and that is that I think that for the two-year period, the costs should be allocated based on what's in the MOU, which is the 55-45, unless by unanimous vote, the JPA agrees otherwise down the road. But that we also incorporate the idea that after that two-year period, it will be based on call volume.
And Mr. Malone, as we move forward, you know, basically, we're writing the Ski Valley in, we're writing Cuesta in, and all of these, but it is subject to their approval also...
Absolutely.
After... Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because, you know, as they sat at the table, and I did tell them that they will have an opportunity to review this and approve it at their own board meeting if they... Or reject it, or make changes or recommendations for changes.
The MOU specifically provides that Mr. James and I are supposed to involve Cuesta and the Ski Valley from the very beginning. And we have both independently spoken with them. They're going to have to decide, you know, whether they want to be at every meeting, whether they want to pay a lawyer, because they don't have in-house lawyers, whether they want to be paying a lawyer to be at every meeting, or whether they want to look at things periodically. They're going to... They've been invited to participate completely, fully. And just as a matter of statute, there's not going to be a JPA that they sign until it goes to their respective political bodies.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malone, you brought up a good point. Again, based on the experience with the landfill board, sometimes these entities don't participate in that meeting. And although sometimes, even if you don't... I mean, sometimes you have to work hard to have a quorum, and when you do have a quorum, that vote can go totally opposite of what you wanted to see accomplished. And that is based on what I've experienced with the landfill board. And so I think one of the things that should be required for sure is that every single entity that is a partner in this have one voting member present at any meeting that is to take place. Otherwise, we'll begin to be in trouble, like we are with the regional landfill many a time. With regards to the call volume, I believe we have committed to Cuesta already that they would not pay anything for at least two years. Have we committed officially, or it has been suggested to them?
It has certainly been suggested.
That has definitely piqued their interest. Mayor Garcia unfortunately has gone. But with Taoski Valley and the conversation that I've had with their elected officials is that they are willing to pay their fair share. Not anything that's at $133, or what did it break down to, actually? It was $300 a call.
Per call.
Per call is what they pay, because they generate about 100 calls a year. And they're being assessed, what is it, 11, $13,000 a year?
I believe it was 11.
Yeah, so it's way up there for them, and it's not fair either to them. Same token, it's not fair for Cuesta to pay a whole lot of money either, because their, you know, their budget isn't as healthy as ours is, based on the size of the entities. When you talk about the 55-45, it's Taos County 55% and the town of Taos 45%? Is that what you're alluding to?
Yes, in the MOU.
Okay. Yeah, I wish that they would agree that that would be the way of the voting structure as well.
On the weighted votes?
Right.
Yes. Actually, the 3-2-1-1 is actually stronger than...
The 1-1-1.
It would still have the same result, by the way, if you figure out the voting mechanics, whether it's 3-2-1-1, or 2-point blank blank, you know, based on 55-45, some fractional vote. It still comes out that Taos County would have a majority if one of the three partners went along.
Right. And the town keeps talking about keeping the politics out of it. It's impossible. Even if we have a manager on the town side and the county side, the commission is still going to weigh in on that county manager. Otherwise, his job might be on the line. So politics is always going to be present. The question is, are we doing what is right for our constituents?
And Bob, when you guys are drafting this up on the weighted vote, or going back there, is there going to be an alternate then? So, you know, the recommendation was that to, I guess, to have a quorum, you're going to have to have all five members there.
Four.
Well, four members, excuse me. So then there's going to have to be an alternate assigned for each, so that if our county managers in Washington, DC, he will have an alternate that will attend that meeting with the voting power to be there. So we need to make sure that there is an alternate named when this JPA all comes to.
That makes sense. And it could either be named, or it could simply say that each party shall have an authorized representative present at every meeting. I mean, if they don't show up, that's another issue. And I have to think through and talk to Mr. James about what we do in that circumstance. Again, I'm not trying to work out every nut and bolt with this commission. Now, we'd be here until midnight if we tried to do that.
And that... Making sure that it wasn't an elected official that was in that voting either, it would have to be...
I suggested that I be the proxy, and apparently Commissioner Romero doesn't like that idea.
But to go back to the... And I realize you're thinking about the first issue we talked about, and that's understandable as things come up in your mind. But to go back to the question about financial contribution, it seems to me that there's two things kind of on the table right now. One is my general suggestion that it be based on call volume and whether this commission finds that to be reasonable. After the first two years, when it's based on 55-45, and we collect the data so we know exactly what the call volume is, that's one question. And it seems like everybody's nodding their heads, so we can take maybe a quick vote on that. But then we need to deal with the question of whether Cuesta, or the Ski Valley, or anybody else is going to initially not pay. I mean, Commissioner Romero, you indicated obviously a strong thought on that, and I want to get some guidance on that point as well.
Commissioner Sanchez, and I wish you were here today, has insisted that Cuesta not pay. Of course, Cuesta's in his district. And conversations that we've had with them, I think it has been looked at as something that was, you know, where Cuesta was not going to be charged. Discussions, like I said, that I've had with Taoski Valley is that they would be happy to pay their fair share.
I don't know if anybody has figured out, based on a true fair share, that is to say, call volume, what Cuesta's actual charge would be, and whether they're able to afford that. I mean, they might want to be involved if it's something that they could fit in their budget. I don't know. Involved in the financial contribution.
Mr. Chairman, you know, here I go again. I don't want... We're not the community bank. But I think the understanding that Cuesta has is that they would not pay for the first two years. But I think after the first two years, I think they should...
Based on call volume.
The only trouble with that, Commissioners, is if they contribute something, then they get a vote. But if they don't contribute anything, what brings them to the table? I mean, I think that if they contribute something, whether it's half of what they did last year, you know, there's got some contribution to the equation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if I could just weigh in on that real quick. Initially, the reason for Cuesta not paying was because the county was going to build their own 911, and we were going to bring them in as a partner for that. The main reason is that we haven't been able to truly determine the accurate call volume, and that's because of the actual ways that the data is being stored and kept by the town. And so this would give us an opportunity to actually weigh in and try to figure out the actual origination of the call, not where the call was placed from, but where the accident or the issue is. And so I think that Cuesta has that in their budget. It's something that could be worked out through the JPA, and they could say whether or not they want to pay or not pay for the first two years. But this has somewhat evolved. Initially, when that offer was on the table, it was put on there based on that the county was going to run the E-911 here, and we're going to build our own and go out on our own. I think that Commissioner Sanchez has continued to say that, you know, if they could hire another public works department or something like that for a half-time, it would really benefit them. And I think it would be fair to them to say, you know, within that two-year time period, now we know what the actual call volume is, and this is your fair share. If they want to pay some of that at the very beginning, then we could discuss that. That could be some of the discussion of the JPA. But, you know, it's... That's how it sort of has evolved from that process.
Mr. Chairman, so we do know that the majority of the calls come then from the county areas versus...
We... Mr. Chairman, that's the problem. We don't know that. I mean...
Don't know that yet. It's not a...
And that's why we want to get state-of-the-art equipment and actually really start looking at that. If you consider that the county's getting hit with all the calls on EMS, but they may be responding to Smith's. I mean, they may be responding to Albertson's. But yes, EMS was called out. It's a county hit, and it's part of what we pay for as running the EMS services for the whole county, which includes the town. So there's those issues that we're actually looking at and trying to establish those numbers.
Mr. Bellis, did you have something to add? I saw you kind of...
Just wanted to say that, first of all, the mayor from Cuesta had come in and agreed that if we were going to upgrade the services to the point where everything worked and put the investment in that the county is in, that they were willing to pay their fair share. In fact, she had mentioned a number that's double what they're paying now. The other part is that I would urge you that when you look at the landfill, for example, and some of the other boards that we have, people's participation rate is directly proportionate to what they pay in. If they don't have an interest, like the Pueblo, they never show up. But as soon as we change the agreement and it costs the Pueblo something, such as we're not going to pick up their dumpsters anymore, we're going to charge them the commercial rate, they show up. And, you know, we didn't hear from Cuesta at times for a long period of time, and the lesser partners where they weren't paying in, so they didn't think they had a vested interest. So if you're paying money, you're going to come to the table, and you're going to make sure that you're getting what you're paid for. So I would urge that, again, votes be tied to... They have to pay something to participate in the game.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Malone's suggestion regarding the calculation of payments in proportion to the actual location of the emergency. And on the other question, you know, I certainly agree with Mr. Bellis that, you know, unless the entity has money on the line, then they shouldn't have a vote. And it eventually, or as soon as possible, should be based upon location of the incident. I know that we don't have the optimum equipment to trace that, but it seems like we probably could figure out a way to trace that. And the sooner the better, in my mind. And that would allow the JPA to function properly. So I make a motion that we accept Mr. Malone's suggestion on that point.
I'll second. Further discussion?
Well, if you could reiterate the motion, Mr. Malone, the way you understood it.
Yeah, I'm...
For Mr. Commissioner Duran, wasn't...
I understand, and I will... I'll repeat it, as I understand it, subject to Commissioner Blankenhorn telling me I didn't get it right. But that the allocation of the cost, and this is putting aside the question of Cuesta for the moment, because that wasn't included in my recommendation, but the allocation of the cost for the first two years be based on the 55-45 that's contained in the MOU, and that thereafter, it be based upon the call volume, which... Based upon where the incident occurs.
Mr. Chairman, is it going to take two years to develop the exact numbers?
No.
I don't know the answer to that. That's a technical answer that I don't know the answer to.
How long would it take?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, no. Basically, once we get in there and we're more involved in the whole process, then we'll actually be able to know those true numbers, yes.
And so I would ask to amend my motion to say that rather than adopting it after two years, we would adopt it as soon as is practicable.
No, amend my second.
And that makes sense to me as well.
Further discussion?
Break the tie.
All for the vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Yes.
And based on the input that you've had, I do need some guidance about whether we should try to include payment, even if it's a small amount, for both of the other parties.
I think they have some budgeted in their budgets. I think, especially the Ski Valley, minimum amount for Cuesta would, I think, would bring everybody to the table.
As far as, I mean, you know, the sooner the better on basing it on call volume, because if you just make it a nominal amount, it's really... There's still not much on the table for them, and if they're... It's got to be tied to the vote. Because actually, when you look at it, if we end up with a 3-2-1-1, those two single ones, they're going to have quite a bit of authority. And so their budget really needs to be on the line. And so, you know, again, you only vote if you pay. That's my position. You can be a member of the board, you can get services. Obviously, we're not going to cut out any services to Cuesta. If there's an emergency in Cuesta, we're going to make the call. But voting has to be tied to payment, and payment should be tied to call volume as soon as we can figure that out.
So you need a motion?
I'll agree with Commissioner Blankenhorn on that one.
Right. I should schedule these regularly. We get all kinds of interesting kumbaya moments.
So you have some good direction, Mr. Malone?
You need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
He made it, you seconded it, right?
Oh, okay. That was on the first, on the second.
We've already voted on that one.
We've already voted on that one.
This is the third one.
Reiterate the question or the motion? Do you want to? My motion is that voting rights should be tied to contribution. Not in proportion, but that you only get to vote if you contribute to the budget. Is that what you need?
Yeah, that's what you need now. I'll second that then.
Further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst?
Yes.
Commissioner Doudon?
Yes.
Yes.
This next item, I think, I'm going to ask Steve to comment on, and I'm not even sure that it needs to be included in the JPA, but it's a subject that Brian James has said from the town's perspective, they'd like to hear what our thoughts are. And I don't have a clear picture, other than what Mr. Archuleta has, but it's the question of employees. If we enter the JPA and we take over as fiscal agent, what's going to happen with regard to the employees? And I know Steve has some thoughts on that, so let me...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, based on the employees, what my recommendation and staff's recommendations to the commission would be that the employees that are currently at the E-911 break solidly from the town of Taos. In other words, they basically are terminated, and whatever is due them from the town, whether that's annual leave, sick leave, whatever the town does when an employee is terminated in that area, that that process happen. We offer the employees that are currently there a job on the same day that they're terminated from the town, and we bring them in as probationary employees for Taos County. That would give us the opportunity, one, to bring them under our system; two, it would give us an opportunity to evaluate the employees and see where they are; and three, then they would start receiving our benefits and everything that we have available to Taos County. I think that's the cleanest way of doing it. It's the best way of doing it. For us to accept them with seniority, to accept them at their pay, at all of those things, those are all critical issues that I'm sure are very important to those employees. But in order for them to become Taos County employees, we are recommending that, basically, they have a clean cut from the town and then become Taos County employees at that point under a probationary status.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you this question, Mr. Archuleta. I know you had mentioned, and so did Mr. Bellis, that there is people from here, from Taos County, that work E-911 somewhere else.
Correct.
What happens if, you know, everything goes according to plan, and we go back to our planning department? What happens if some of these people from other places apply here, that live here in Taos County? Then is that being cleared to the people from the town that, you know, they get terminated over there? Well...
Commissioner Doudon, I think initially, during the first six-month period, we actually have to allow those employees that are currently working the E-911 to continue employment there. If at some point we have vacancies, or at some point we decide that Taos County no longer wants to employ the probationary employees because of their work ethic or whatever issues we have, then we terminate them at that point, and we advertise those positions. Part of what we're trying to do within Taos County is also be as competitive as we can. A lot of the individuals that you're talking about are individuals that are working in Espanola and some of these other areas and are driving, and that are very good dispatchers that have the training and that are available. And so if we can be more competitive in that aspect, that's definitely what we're looking at in our job descriptions and how we're trying to set up our pay scale.
I'll go with the recommendation that you said, that, you know, they get terminated from the town.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. So would the employees ever be employed by the JPA itself?
They'd be employed as the fiscal agent. The JPA basically doesn't pay para insurances, those kind of things. So it really, if and when we decide to become the fiscal agent, then they would become employees of the county as the entity to actually pay the insurances, pay the para, and pay all of those things.
Okay.
I think at some point, Commissioner, if, you know, there's a tax that's passed and that money is given over to the JPA, then that could be looked at at that point, but I don't think that we're ever, we're at that point at this point.
So that is in line with us taking over the fiscal agency? Great. Thank you.
At whatever point that decision's made, yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion?
No further discussion.
Call for the...
Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst.
Yes.
Commissioner Doudon.
Yes.
Yes.
One final item on this.
You only had three.
I thought I said I had four, didn't I? I did say four.
Would you bring that back now?
Commissioner Romero raised this question at the joint session, and it was a good question, and I gave him some thought to it, and then asked Mr. Bellis to give some thought to it. And so let me outline the issue, and the issue is simply, once we form the JPA, in terms of the equipment, we've said in the MOU that the equipment and leases and things like that will become the joint property of the members of the JPA. But in terms of the real property, the building, the land, that's a pretty big hill to step to say that that just all gets turned over. And it's a good-for-the-goose, good-for-the-gander situation. It's not just the question of our planning building, if that's where the operation ends up. It's also that currently, the current kind of split operation that's going on between Kit Carson and the old dispatch center, the town owns that building, that antenna, those things. And so I think that we need to make clear that real property doesn't become the property, but that there also has to be some kind of long-term lease or dollar a year, that, you know, there was, nobody's going to benefit from charging the JPA for the property. That's my thinking on it, but that issue needs to be addressed, and I think Mr. Bellis has some thoughts about that as well.
What I passed out to you was a website page for San Juan County, and the point of it being the listing of the number of agencies that participate. And I think the page is a little out of date. It also includes the Navajo Nation and BIA, but Park Service, the Detention Centers, the Forest Service, BLM, Chaco Canyon, New Mexico Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife, the Air Ambulance, the Regional Hospital, EMS, all the fire departments, all the police departments. The commitment that San Juan County and the municipalities made there early on to get all of these folks in that building was that they would not play politics with the building. Right now, BLM, Forest Service have to move, and it's not a question of, I know that the town argues, no, 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 they want to go with us, or they haven't committed formally. They had a leak in their roof, and they found asbestos, they found mold, they found other problems. So they actually have evacuated their building. They're in a temporary headquarters. So they're looking for a place now, and they have asked us now. But, and we also think that, based on a recent visit, that BLM and Forest Service will commit in the consult, long-term consolidation of the Santa Fe and Taos offices, we have a lot to offer because of the location and use of this building, for example, in case of an emergency and the equipment here. But a key to that is, they don't want to put in all the money to move, buy equipment, and then a year from now, there's a different set of commissioners, and there's a different mood, and the rent goes up, and whatever the circumstances are. So what I would ask you is, along the lines of what Mr. Malone said, certainly, the county has an interest and cannot convey the physical real estate at this point. We still owe money on it. We don't even have a clear title to do that. But that you would offer a dollar a year for 10 years to anyone that wants to enter into that building as an enticement. So, and that's relatively the life of the equipment, but that there would be a sense of security, and also for us in attracting grant funding, too, because, you know, we've moved this all over the place. So I'm sure the state and federal government's going to want to see that there's a long-term physical commitment to a site. And within that 10 years, more than likely, we would be designing in the interim a ideal facility that everyone could participate in and agree in. So again, it's the idea that we can be greedy here, but in the end, think of why we objected to what the town was doing. The town wanted to start us, start charging us for being in the building. Certainly, it's the JPA's responsibility and the partners' responsibility to pay the utilities in the building, the upkeep of the building, but they do need that stability.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, as long as we don't turn over ownership of the real property, because this is very expensive real estate. And like you said, we still owe on it.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that the JPA would enter into a lease in whatever location the dispatch operations occurred. Is that correct?
I would think that would be the structure.
So...
At a dollar.
Well, I mean...
For our building.
It would depend on, yeah, I mean, it would depend on the building, and it would depend on who was in control of that, but the decision will be made by the JPA entity as to the location and what terms of the lease that they'd be willing to agree to.
And this is, Mr. Chairman, this is something that would entice everybody, if it's a dollar a year or whatever for the lease, for all the other entities, it would definitely entice everyone else, probably, but the town, because their interest is still with the Kit Carson building.
And, but then that brings another point, which is, who's going to pay for all of it? And so, under the JPA, it seems to me that the entities would contribute to capital expenditures also, and that that could be done along the same lines as, based on percentage of call.
But specifically, here is just the lease in question. That's the only thing that we're talking about.
It would be both, it would be both our physical property and the town's physical property, in this case, the dispatch, the old Civic Plaza Drive Center, where they're currently housing their radios that are hooked up to their antenna and so forth. So it would, again, it would be what's good for the goose is good for the gander, that neither would be charging.
And bringing Civic Plaza Drive into the question, that is still in use. I understand, there's a tower, there's equipment there that's still being...
It's part of the operation.
...used as an aid to the system at the new command center.
Exactly.
Is the town, then, under this JPA, going to want to come back and assess a fee to everybody for that amount for whatever they think their property is worth?
That's exactly my point, Commissioner Romero, that neither us nor they, in making our respective offers to the JPA, however you want to describe it, would be charging anything other than a nominal, something like a dollar a year rent.
I agree. And I'll set that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I just want to, I just would like you to address the capital expenditures. It's not really on this.
Maybe it could be on a separate question.
On a separate question, yeah. Because there's going to be huge capital expenditures, no matter what, right? I mean, we're talking about making some big capital expenditures for our community in terms of equipment. And so I don't want Taos County to pay that 100%.
Well, the commission has already committed to that.
Let me suggest that we carry on the discussion and vote on what's on the table, and then move to Commissioner Blankenhorn's question.
You all right with that, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion on this item. Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst.
Yes.
Commissioner Doudon.
Yes.
So on the expenditure...
On the expenditures, that's a really tough one, and quite frankly, I didn't put that on my list, but I'm glad you, actually, it was on an earlier list that was much longer, and I was thinking about the time it would take to discuss everything and how much detail we should go into, and it got excluded. But the difficulty in specifying capital improvements as part of the JPA is that each body, based on their separate financial status, has to make its own judgment about what it can and can't agree to. That's at the base of the fiscal obligation and responsibility that each entity has. And so, for example, how does the JPA say, we've got to spend $20 million, and then nobody can come up with it? Well, that can't happen.
No, no, of course.
And so I'm not, I didn't really know how to address that issue, quite frankly, Commissioner.
It's just prorated. Any, the JPA is going to make decisions about location and equipment that are going to, under which we're going to operate our dispatch. The JPA, the board will make those decisions. And those votes, again, need to be tied to some fiscal responsibility. And so it would be the same as operational. It would be no different than operational. You would pay a prorated amount of operational cost based on call volume, and you would pay a prorated amount of capital expenditures based on call volume. And of course, we can't designate what those capital expenditures are going to be, because the new board will make those decisions.
Yeah, the difference between that and the operational funds, and I welcome the discussion, because it's something I've wrestled with and, quite frankly, don't know the right answer to. The difference between that and operational funds, at least at this initial stage, is the size of the, is the amount. I mean, we're talking now about something in the range of $2 million. And, you know, either the county is willing to take that on regardless of what our partners are willing to contribute, or we're not. But if it's based solely on what our partners are willing to contribute, suppose that we say we need $2 million to make an operation here at our planning department function in the way we want it to function, and each of the other three bodies goes back to their respective political entities, and we just don't have that money. Then what happens? And so it seems to me that at a real practical level, it comes down to whether we're willing to spend the money regardless of what our partners are willing to spend.
Commissioners, let me, one comment. We're spending too much time on this, and anyway, this JPA ain't going to go through.
Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Chairman, one of the arguments we've historically made as to why the county should be the fiscal agent is that we could save money for all of the partners, because we have access to resources that the other partners don't. For example, the $75,000 that was supposed to fix the repeaters came from us. Only the county can get the Homeland Security money. In addition, we were the only ones that have access to capital funds at this point. And the town, in providing an incentive which brought us back to the table, said they would handle the moving costs, they would handle capital costs for the current change that was made. I'm presuming that that would be the case if the county wanted to entice the other members to move somewhere else, we would probably have to make the same offer, which is to say, we're providing a facility, we're providing the moving costs and the equipment, we invite you to come over and participate, particularly since we do have the dedicated resources. There was actually even a question in that the current JPA proposes, which is a lot of money, that immediately on forming this JPA, you have to put back the $250,000 capital reserve, which was depleted for the move to Kit Carson. There's about $110,000 in there. The suggestion the county manager has made is that that just reduces to 110 in the JPA, which is what is there now. But again, wherever we're going, more than likely, the county will be the source of that capital money through the Homeland Security grant. So I'm presuming that we would not want a JPA, that despite the board making the financial and budgetary decisions they would have to approve, we would not want to prevent that if any of the partners, or the JPA as a whole, had access to additional funds, that they could contribute to the program, that we would block that by saying, well, we can get $1 million from Homeland Security, but that means each of you are going to have to put up $10,000 for it.
Right. So I didn't ask for this one to get decided, and I don't have the answer...
Does it need to be decided today?
It doesn't need to be decided.
It's not necessarily on the agenda to be decided.
Well, it's not on the agenda, it doesn't need to be decided. I hope that Mr. James and I, in knocking that question around, can come up with something that makes sense to both bodies, but it's a tough one. And Commissioner Blankenhorn... And Commissioner Blankenhorn, you've identified why it's a tough one.
All right. Anything else on this?
Not on this issue.
Okay. Commissioners, we want to move on?
Break for lunch.
Or you want to break for lunch?
Mr. Chairman, is there anyone in the agenda that's got to be taken care of that way they don't spend the rest of their day listening to us?
Well, I know we have the next item, and Mr. Chavez is here. Do you have another item on there besides this one, Mr. Chavez? Excuse me?
He has more.
Okay. So what is the wishes of the commission?
Let's break for lunch.
You have a motion to break for lunch? Do you have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Oh, yes, ma'am. Commissioners, do you have a motion to go into regular, back into session? We have a motion...
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. So go on to item B, Public Works, Rick Chavez, Public Works Director, Hondo Seco Traffic Study. Mr. Rick?
Chairman, Commissioners, a little while back, citizens from Arroyo Hondo specifically, or mostly, came to the county, to the commissioner and to the county manager with a couple of issues, and the result of that, or we did, because we had a meeting in Arroyo Hondo, and the folks there had a couple of issues. The one we focused on was the safety of Hondo Seco between 522 and as you start going up the foothills, past the churchways, and you start going up towards Seco. So what was agreed upon at that meeting is that we would look at the roadway, traffic issues, some of them was vegetation, others specifically was speed humps, there's concerns about the speed. Of course, the width of the roadway is also an issue, and also curvature, the horizontal alignment. So I went out there and I looked at all these issues. Since then, we have started to cut trees that are within the fences, fence to fence. So we started to do that, we haven't completed those trees, but we will continue to do that. Also, if you notice on your map, there's like pink or red dots, more towards the church, there's five of them. Those are properties that have been identified that have trees within their properties that obscure the views of the traveling public, particularly around the corner. So what I recommend is that we pursue them voluntarily, trimming those trees, and provide better sight distance. With that then, if we can, let's start on the Hondo side, and look at the sign, at the signs that are depicted there on the right-hand side as you're traveling towards 522. We're on the same page on that? So the first thing you'll see is that you'll have an arrow sign with a 15 mile an hour placard. And then soon after that, you're going to have a speed hump. Now, I show one speed hump sign, but in all cases where there's a speed hump, there'll be signs on both sides, along with the appropriate markings on the speed hump itself. And then you continue north, and you'll see the third, the second speed hump, again, two speed humps, signs rather. In between that and the next speed hump is going to be another curb sign with 10 mile an hour placard, which will take the travelers around that curve. Then if you continue around the curve, you will see an arrow sign. Right now, we don't have anything like that. What we do have in the direction headed towards Seco is concrete wall barrier, which are knocked down occasionally. And continuing then west is another speed hump, and then the second speed hump in that direction. So now we're going to have, I'm recommending five speed humps. Then we will replace the firehouse sign there, along with that placard beneath it, fire station. There's one there now, and then a big sign beneath it says, "Trucks turning." We're going to take the trucks turning and replace the posts and the signs themselves. Soon after the firehouse, we will then post it for 25 mile an hour. As you head west, then you'll come to the slight reverse curve, we'll have a sign there. And then children at play. There is already a stop sign ahead, which will be there, stay there, and of course, a stop sign is there already. So that's the signage recommended in the direction from the Seco side towards Hondo. Coming back the other way from 522, speed limit sign's already there, reverse curve, children at play. Then you will have the firehouse, there is no firehouse sign in that direction right now. Then you'll have a curvature sign with a 10 mile an hour placard, of course, the two speed humps with the associated signing. Come back around, you'll have a reverse curve in the other direction, although it's kind of hard to see that, because you're looking at it like that in the curves behind you, or in the other direction. So that is what I recommend as far as improving the safety of the road. As I told Commissioner Blankenhorn, signs of themselves don't necessarily mean anything unless there's enforcement, and also signs like anything else, regulatory or advisory, are dependent on the folks themselves who are willing to obey them. So that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is what I'm recommending for signing on Hondo Seco. What I do need is approval from the commission as a body to approve the speed humps as it is depicted in your ordinance.
Thank you so much for this, Rick. This has been a very dangerous area for years, there's been a number of accidents, and as we heard that night, there's a lot of concern, much people who live there in the community. I think this is going to make a big difference, make it quite a bit safer, that see the area of Hondo that includes the church, people go way too fast, and like I said, a number of accidents have already occurred, and so I think this is a great plan, and I really appreciate it. So, yeah. How much is it going to cost?
Signs are about, maybe $40 a sign, so, you know, 400. The speed humps are about $300 per speed hump, depending on the width of the road. So there you got 1,500, maybe about $2,000. I still have $28,000 left?
Twenty-eight.
No, the signs I have on an inventory, so it's, the only expenditure will be the asphalt for the speed humps.
And my biggest concern, Rick, is the safety, but the other concern is if we're going to approve these speed humps, that they be, I don't know how to put this, done...
Standard?
Yeah, to some sort of standard, because I know we've put some in before, and then we have to take them out, because then now the guy up above them can't get his car over them, or they're diverting the water to somebody's house, or they're diverting the water, you know, or they're holding the water. And so, you know, that's just my concern, and I know you'll look at that if we approve it today, but, you know, and, because these speed humps, I don't think they can get any acceleration to go over them. If they were on this straightaway trying to slow down, they'd actually speed up the traffic in that area, because they try to go 50 or 60 so they don't feel the speed hump. But in this area, they're going to be slowing down because they have a curb, and then to slow the traffic down to mitigate some of the, I want to say, health concerns, but some of the, well, health concerns because of the possible accidents, but...
And we do have a standard that's based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's 12 foot along the roadway, four inches high, in a parabolic shape, and that's based on most wheelbases of vehicles, so that they don't scrape as they go over. So I agree that some of our speed humps are not up to that standard, but the ones we're building is going to be that way.
Okay.
And one of the residents suggested that we don't want those nice speed humps, we want some that really, and we can't do that.
Well, and you've got a fire department right there, too, and, you know, sometimes them are hard on the fire trucks. I mean, so I just, yeah. Just so that their consideration is given to, you know, really the placement of them, and, you know, consideration about the water drainage and that they're putting correctly.
And, you know, in the petition that we normally provide citizens to petition the commission for speed humps, they indicate there that there's some adverse effects with speed humps, you know, increased noise, increased emissions, water, people sometimes go on adjacent lands, private land, to get over, or not to have to go over the speed hump. So this hasn't happened as a petition, so hopefully, there's no objection when they find a speed hump right in front of their house.
That'll, Mr. Chairman, bring up a whole new realm of problems. That'll bring up a whole new realm of problems that speed humps normally do. There's people that want them and people that don't. For example, you know, a couple of weeks ago on West Romero Road, there was a mobile home that was being moved, and the axle broke on the mobile home, and it was delayed the traffic for a whole day. Driver of the truck pulling the trailer blamed it on the speed hump.
Yeah, but, you know, I've asked him, "Has this ever happened to you before?" "Oh, all kinds of times, on the interstate." You know, I lost, what do you find on the interstate? But as a matter of fact, you know, that mobile home ended up in the mobile home parking of the Abetas. In fact, they went over at the intersection of West Romero and Coachia, where we had put rocks, they went across that whole thing with a mobile home, because they can't make that turn. When they get into that mobile home park, they, you know, that, the people, they're stacked up, the sagebrush and dirt, but they cut right through the fence and went, so that was a little bit more rougher than just that of the speed hump.
So, Rick, are you going to go out there and actually mark these out on the highway, maybe a couple of weeks or a week ahead of time?
They've been marked for about a month, right?
Oh, okay.
So I'm comfortable with it. I might give it a negative call or two, but it's my district, but I'm very comfortable with the plan as is.
And the placement of it?
And the placement. I went and drove it myself, got some feedback, and talked to Rick about it. You know, Rick's the engineer, he knows about these sorts of things, and I think he's done a good job in looking it over and carefully assessing it, both in the mat and on the ground. So I'm very pleased with it. And, you know, I'm not a big fan of speed humps, you know. Speed humps along straightaway roads that are not very congested, obviously, the people who live there always want it, but personally, I think it does more harm than good in a community for those kinds of situations. But this is a very narrow, curvy road, it's very densely populated, with a church right in the middle, that a lot of people walk in, and it's one of those rare places where I think speed humps can make a difference in saving people injury. It's all over.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. No wonder he didn't go to lunch with her. Next, request for approval, a new F-350 truck for Public Works District Five crew.
Chairman, Commissioner, the funding for this comes from the 399. Each one of you has 50,000. District Five has chosen to utilize their portion to buy a truck. Fortunately, the amount available restricts us to what we can get. We had started out pricing 450, 550s, then went down to 450s, and what we're faced with now is a 354 truck, four-wheel drive, dual rear wheels. We had, when we first put the numbers together, we failed to notice that the price was for gasoline, but in order to get diesel, then we had to add to that price, I think, $89, $8900. $8900 sold that, forced us then to remove from the list of options a plow, snow plow, although we still left the spreader on there, and also, we still left the, but I'm sure it is the, well, we didn't. I was going to say the prep, the plow prep. Apparently, we didn't. So this is what we're looking at as far as getting that truck with those options.
Mr. Chairman, Rick, did you check and see how much for a positive traction?
For, this is not extended cab, as I had told you, this is a regular cab. The extended cab is $4,500. The crew cab is $57.95.
Hold on.
Additional, additional.
And, okay, crew cab is how much more?
$57.95.
$57.95, and for a...
Extended?
No, for a... Crew cab, oh, 57, that's the two-seater, no?
$57.95. For a crew cab, you have two seats.
Four-door.
Okay. The 57, the 57 is for a four-door.
Correct.
And for the crew cab?
That is the crew cab.
Sorry.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the only other option, Commissioner, is the extended cab?
Extended cab is $4,500. Which is that one that just has that?
Forty-five, okay, okay. How much is the spreader?
Right there, more in it. $6,700.
If we go with a crew cab, and we eliminate the spreader, do we have enough?
Yeah.
And the positive traction and the self-locking hubs are...
That is not identified specifically in the SBA. It shows actual factor standard, whatever that is, we'd have to call them and see what that factor standard is. But the rear axle is limited slip rear differential. Or there is another option that is, well, yeah. The other thing there, an item is limited slip rear differential, was I don't know why they list it, because that's what it is, what comes with it, you know, not as an option now.
Comes with it, but it limits, then what it is, is, what I had asked for, no? So then, I just talked to the foreman, and I'd rather go with a crew cab, eliminate the spreader, if we got enough. And then the only other thing is make it a manual log hub instead of the automatic type?
I'll check on that. Because that is not offered as an option.
That is not offered as an option?
Not, it's not identified, but the factor standard might be.
Okay, yeah, but just those two, okay? And do they have it in stock, or do they have to order?
Well, they have to order, it'll take two or three months to get it, and then to build it with a platform. Excuse me, the platform body and everything else.
Okay.
Asking for.
Then, so I move to approve.
I'll second, Commissioner.
Is that the recommendation of staff?
Yeah. I mean, we need trucks in three districts really bad, and this, at least, this is a step.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Is there any way we can take off the spreader off the Dodge and put it on this vehicle? Because we have that issue with the Dodge, it usually breaks down.
The spreader probably isn't an issue, it's the plow that, well, I guess we could take out the prep off the plow as well.
Right. Off the Dodge truck and put that on the Ford?
The spreader, I don't think there's any problem, maybe the plow might be a little problem, but...
If not, I'm seeing that we still have about $1,000 in savings there, so maybe we could do the prep for the plow to match that.
But we don't know if that prep will match that other one. We'll check to see what kind of plow...
Different frame widths or...
Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. So, Human Resources, Brett Harameo, HR Director, sorry, request for approval of new job description for Taos County Clerk's Office, Ana Martinez, county clerk.
Hello, Chairman, Porta Commissioners. I am actually representing Brett Harameo. He's actually absent for today, so I'm going to represent the HR Department on this behalf. What we are requesting is approval for a new job description for the Clerk's Office. It's basically a senior deputy clerk position that we are actually created and would like to approve.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Pay, pay increase, no pay increase or...
Well, it goes along with the second request. So basically, what we're trying to do is we're trying to, we have our deputy three position, which can't go any higher. So we're trying to make the senior deputy so that we would be able to put that individual in that position.
But the pay, how much more?
They would, well, it would go up $2. And I have it in my budget.
What is the recommendation, Mr. Chairman, of the staff?
Recommendation from staff is to approve, as the chairman knows and the commission, we've been monitoring for three months on a lot of these different positions that are going to come forward. GRTs last month were about equal, but the month prior, they were a little bit higher. And so we're in the process of evaluating all the requests that have come over to HR and then looking at that on an individual basis.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Discussion? No? Call for the vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. And I just want to comment, the assessor's gonna bring theirs to us here shortly. Okay. Okay, the next item on the request for approval of two job reclassification for the County Clerk's Office, Ms. Ana Martinez.
So basically, Commissioners, the senior deputy, right now Diana Duran is a deputy clerk three. The position created would move her up to a senior deputy. Also, Dolores Luhon is a deputy clerk two. We'd like to move her into a deputy three. Both of these ladies have over, between the two of them, 25 years of experience that we think brings a lot to the county. And, you know, it would be a $2 increase for each of them.
Move for approval.
And again, you have this within your budget.
I do have it within my budget.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Not call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Construction Administration, Rick Bellas, Deputy County Manager, and Mr. Rick Sanchez, Construction Administrator, approval of capital expenditures for OEM renovation?
We'll share. As you're aware, you approved a transfer earlier this year of $400,000 from our reserves to the construction fund. And that was set up for the initial civil and design costs for the old planning building in the event that it was to be used for BLM and Forest Service, or as emergency management headquarters, or at some point in the future for combined dispatch and E-911. And subsequent to that, you approved only one line item by a vote, and that was the antenna. So we wanted to come back for clarification. We have detailed quotes, and I would ask Kenrad and Richard to come up here. These guys, you've got a really good team on this project. And they got finite numbers, quotes, real tight figures within about three or four days. So the actual numbers on this project are getting more and more accurate. And I would ask the two guys that put most of these together to explain the details in these. But we would like your permission to approve these expenditures out of that $400,000 to keep the process moving. And then purchasing, we'll get together with the county attorney to develop professional service agreements for the architectural work and scope of work and contracts for the remaining items.
Chairman, Commissioners, basically what you have a list of different items that are infrastructure for the property across the street on Lovato, between the corner of Lovato and Albright. The bulk of them are going to be going towards the old planning building to prepare it, whether it becomes an E-911 center or an emergency operations center for our Director of Emergency Management. Some of the things that are included on this list that we have state contracts with are the generator to power, to do backup power for the building. It's a 50 KW generator with all the company switchgear, a three-day fuel tank. That's on state contracts, $30,000. We also have, anytime you do any construction on a commercial building, you have to have architectural design work, whether it be done by an engineer or an architect firm. We have a proposal for Taos Living Design Group to do the basic floor plan modifications, the site layout, code review, other miscellaneous items that are required to convert the building to an EOC or an E-911 building. The mast and the antenna, you've already been apprised of that and have approved that. There is a possibility that the antenna may increase to 75 feet. We'd like to do a radiography study to make sure that there's plenty of height. One of the other reasons for the additional height over the 50-foot antenna was if the Forest Service and the BLM do choose to move over and it looks like they're going to, we need the additional space for the additional antennas when they relocate over there. There's electrical design. That electrical design is for the new service entrance into the building, because we have right now just Kit Carson power. Anytime you change this electrical service, you need to have an electrical engineer redesign it and give line diagrams, call out the conductor sizes and whatnot. That'll, that's the design work for a new distribution panel, the way the new generator would tie into the building and leave space for additional sub panels for radio equipment or any other additions to the building. There's, the next item is, it says general contracting for the fence and security gates. We're talking about fencing off both the planning building and the parking lot and the old grants building. This would have card readers, automatic gates. The security system, we're looking at tying it into our existing campus system so that we can monitor who goes in. People from inside the building would be able to allow access to visitors also inside. There'd be intercom and cameras positioned in the various places throughout the facility. The extension of the fiber switches, interface equipment, security cameras, that's all part of the infrastructure. Whatever Taos County decides to do with that piece of property, it needs to be connected to our main campus for phone lines, communication, security, everything else. This would allow us to put in a multi-strand fiber from all along Lovato Place with some pole stations and connect it to our main telephone system in the courthouse. And whatever we do out there, whether it's record storage, if it's fleet maintenance, if it's Onsano's building, that would allow that property to be tied to this property electronically. Like I said, the radiography study, that's something that was not anticipated, but it's something that would assure us that all our emergency management communications would work flawlessly with the repeaters at the various points, San Antonio, Pico Ries, Flag Mountain. Town of Taos variance for the height, we'd have to ask, if we do go with a 75-foot tower, if it's required, the town allows a 50-foot without a variance. We'd have to apply for a variance for a 75-foot tower. We also need to get a street cut permit to bring our conduits across Albright. When we come across Albright, we also have plans on putting additional four-inch conduits, probably three at least, so that as technology changes or we need more capacity, we wouldn't have to take up the street again. We'd have the conduits that we're using and additional blank conduits that would cross the street. There's the subtotal there. And then we have, right now, we're using 6% as a contingency because a lot of items, until you get the design work for the electrical, for the architectural, you really don't have any idea. You can't get a quote on it because it's all supposition. But this is something that we would like to move forward with, the infrastructure, whether it becomes a 911 or it becomes emergency management.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion? Mr. Blanken.
BLM would operate out of it for, for what?
I have, I don't know the BLM. Of it. I don't know the Forest Service. I mean, it's on the table for Forest Service. It's on the table for BLM. They've visited the sites several times. My understanding from our emergency management director is that they've kind of given them a verbal commitment because they do have issues. But whether we charge them rent, don't charge them rent, that's kind of up to this commission, not myself. This does not include any 911. It does include the basic telephone services into the building. Currently, there are no telephone services into the building because as we were using it, it had a radio link to the campus when it was a planning building. So there were no hard lines brought into the building. We can request the service from Century Link, and there will be no charge until you activate the services. Actually, actually, this is no telephony in there.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhorn, actually, this cost is just for the basic telephone service. And there is also an additional cost for the E-911 trunk lines, which is not included with this yet because we don't have those hard numbers yet. And so once we get that finalized, then we'll come forward to bring that figure to you. That depends on how they want to bring their equipment in. If they want to do a wireless link back over to their facility, then they wouldn't need that. That's correct.
No, that wasn't the plan. Handheld radios are... No, 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 no. Let me try and make that perfectly clear, Commissioner. What's going into this building is just basic infrastructure, whether it's going to be Forest Service, OEM, grants, anybody who's going to be the person actually living within the structure there. So this, as far as the phone system goes, the tower and the generator is if it's being used by some dispatch entity or if my office moves there. Now, with the tower, the reason for the increase in tower height would be to assure hitting the repeater sites, but also gives added spacing for the antennas that would be there, whether Forest Service is there or not. And to answer your question earlier, Forest Service, they had a meeting with both the Carson and Santa Fe about a week ago after they discovered the asbestos in their facility. And they actually vacated their current facility and they're working out of their main office. So they expressed an interest when they could move in. And I was trying to get a letter from them showing their intent, but with the federal government going on, having no money, couldn't get the letter today. So the intent is that they would be there long-term. They actually, when we met with them and BLM about a week and a half ago, they asked if it was a joint center in the future between 911 and them. In the event, we built a new structure. If they could continue to be housed in there, we also gave them the option that they could then move to the new structure if possible. The key feature to them is the location of the building, the availability of the property around that building, and then also having the old grants building to use as an expanded dispatch in case there was a forest fire. So there is a lot of benefit to them there. Now, they wouldn't operate off handheld radios. Like I said, that's a very unreliable way to do business. But they did say that there may be a option for them to then hang a microwave antenna on the tower we're suggesting and link back to their current facility off of Cruz Alta to, so they don't have to move their radio equipment, but they would still have to put a microwave link in to feed back to those, that radio system. It wouldn't be necessarily, I guess, some of the talk that we had was, yeah, they would be in there rent-free, but they would pay part of the overhead costs. And with having, and beyond what we're showing now, there's nothing, no other additional costs for them to move in. This would be the basic package, whether Forest Service moves in, whether my office relocates, or any other entity, whether it's 911 or needs to be in there at that point. The equipment, I mean, it's more clarification. Forest Service doesn't need the telephony like we get from DFA because they're not an emergency dispatch system. They need the tower so they can hit their repeater sites. So yes, that statement is true. If E-911 went in there, then we would need the extra telephony that's part of the DFA package, and that's going to be an additional cost beyond this. But as far as getting the building prepped for an entity to move in, this would probably be the basic package. I don't really have a reason why the JPA wouldn't as far as E-911 goes. But once again, since Forest Service doesn't do emergency dispatching, and they've been showing the willingness to move into a facility and do a joint venture with the county, I don't see where the JPA board would have to really make a determination on a joint venture between county and Forest Service. And that is true, Commissioner, but the way the project has been broken out is E-911 would take half the building, Forest Service would take the other half of the building. This was more of an olive branch to... The reason why I look at it this way is it's not necessarily just for, that the, I guess, the wish or the intent is that E-911 is going to move there. Like we said before, if E-911 decides to stay at its current location, that's all well and fine. I, in my role as the emergency manager, still have the availability of that tower where I can use other equipment that's not necessarily commercial dispatch radios, but emergency ham radios to do some of these redundant links in case we lose some other type of communication. Yes and no, because if they decided to stay at Kit Carson, that's not my building. I can't just go hang my equipment off of their structure or off of the tower there if we don't own it or if we're not in control of it. Yes, it's possible. Yes, it is possible.
Having a memorandum of understanding to enter into a JPA, why don't we wait and make these communication decisions under the centralized board that is entrusted to make these decisions? They may come up with a way that is much more efficient and effective and saves $364,000. That's not a small amount of money, you know. I just don't understand, if we're going in one direction, why don't we go in that direction? You know, we're taking two divergent... You know, we're taking two divergent, separate directions. I...
That way. My, my way of looking at it is there's going to be a move made somewhere, and if we don't prep the building now for Forest Service, then we may lose them somewhere else. And trying to build a relationship with them for the future, I mean, I've, I've just been kind of working under the direction that's been given me. I'm not trying to, to supersede anybody's authority, but I think if the option is there for them to move in, they want to move in today, and we're telling them, well, if we prep the building, you can move in first of the year, and now we're going to go back to them and tell them, well, we may or may not do this in nine months.
They're not going to make their final decision. Their, their decision about their permanent location...
On the I-DOT, that's correct, but this isn't part of the I-DOT. The I-DOT is where they could consolidate Santa Fe and the Carson. This is strictly a move that the Carson wants to do because of the suggestion that they're in at their current facility.
Yeah, I might want to, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that... We're inferring that we're hedging our bets on two things we are. One is that after meeting with the people that are making the decision for the I-DOT, for the regional plan for federal communications, they were impressed with this facility and what it offered, not just as the building over there, but with the availability of space over here, and felt it would be looked at very favorably when that decision came around. If we know that Forest Service and BLM need to move now in the Taos office, and we put them in there and we position ourselves properly, yes, it's a gamble. We're saying, we, we know they're going to be here seven years for as long as it takes to make that decision, maybe longer, at the Taos office, but we also know that that will give us a leg up on other competitors because they won't go out and have to do build from ground up, they won't have to identify a commercial site that they'll have to rehab and put money into, and they'll have an established center of communications that works for them for years. And yes, we were hedging our bets in regards to Kit Carson because right now, the system doesn't work, and we may have to give you a cost analysis of saying you can either sink $2 million into that building or $2 million into this building.
Why didn't you give us that cost analysis all of a sudden? Once we've had a chance to truly analyze what's going on there, which has been set up by the OEM, I mean, you know, what are we doing? I'm not even sure why we're bothering with the MOU and the JPA, you know? I mean, if this is the direction we're heading, then why are we wasting everybody's time?
Well, I think the 911 committee believes that we were directed by a majority of the county commission by a formal vote that we were to proceed per a timetable that would deliver along with Motorola's calendar, if needed, a fully functional E-911 dispatch center by February 1st.
Well, that, that doesn't answer the question. I mean, it answers the question maybe from your perspective, but not from the board's perspective, you know? Either, either we're going to make an honest attempt at regionalizing this communication operation, or we're not. And, you know, if we're not, then yeah, let's spend the $364,000 and then the next million after that, you know? But if we are, let's wait until the JPA is operating and the board members can get advice from you guys once you're in there, you know exactly what's going on, you can give them good feedback. Right now, there's a lot of speculation because we don't know what's happening over there, but under the MOU, you guys are going to have unfettered access. Why don't we wait until you know more about what's going on over there? You can advise the new board, and the new board can make this decision in the best interest of the community. That's the whole purpose of regionalization.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Veroni, I really don't want this to be perceived totally as a ruse that we're trying to cover up what we're doing on 911. Personally, I've advocated for three years that having emergency management, EMS, and county fire eventually, all in different locations throughout the county, not coordinated, and as the county manager will tell you, it is not paved up there, it is not plowed up there, okay? It doesn't even have sufficient gravel, the gate locks all the time at Yanakamato. We've pulled water buffaloes out of there, the wheels were frozen up to their hubs, tires were flat, we couldn't get in and out of the building, vehicles weren't being recharged. It's not an ideal location, and we also know just from holding a training on the fireside that it's set definitely not big enough for an OEM, for a command center, and we know that from the energy outage we had here where, where we took out all of Kit Carson's building, including their offices. So from a practical sense, when we had that incident two years ago, and we were in the process of building this building, we made an adjustment. We put in these monitors, we put in some other connections because we learned from that, that we needed a hub here that had alternative power, that was located near our law enforcement, that had paved parking lots that people could get in and out of, and that we could set up a press center, a command center, have our microwave link, and not just for the emergency purposes, but because most of the equipment that goes out, our plows, for example, needed to be tied into that communication system. So this is honestly a serious attempt to address what we started three years ago. We just did not have the space in this building because it turned out that we didn't have room in the sheriff's apartment, and those commissioners that were here know that the sheriff was very upset he didn't have the room he anticipated. So there certainly wasn't room in that building to put an OEM office in there. So this is just catching up on what was started several years ago. It's, it's not totally just to set up this subterfuge that, yeah, we really don't have intention to go on Kit Carson. If you ask the members of the committee, do we think that'll happen? We've met with the Ski Belly, we've met with Questin, the votes, it has nothing to do with us. Nobody has the votes to want to go there or stay there, including the dispatchers that are there, but we are making a fair attempt. We've met last week with the staff over at the town, and we have a series of questions that we hope to pose to them this Thursday. We'll meet with them every week.
It all should be in my location. I, I mean, I agree with you. It all should be in my location, obviously. So, and, and my point is, the JPA is going to make that decision. I don't want to make that decision. I don't know enough about it. I want the JPA to make that decision.
Mr. Chairman, and so, say for example, that the JPA is formalized and it goes through, and they make...
Exactly as we're talking about today, and you are sent out to purchase this equipment, will the price be the same or will it go up by then?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I would, none of us being clairvoyant, I would put that a different way. We absolutely know right now because Forest Service and BLM took their committee over there. We absolutely know because we have all been over there, that there is insufficient room for anything more than what is there.
At the current building.
At the current building. So if we stay at Kit Carson, we still need a building for BLM and Forest Service, we need a building for OEM and county fire. And we already own those buildings, so it makes no sense for us to go out and rent other space.
But that's not true, Rick. That's not true. That's not true. I mean, we could get the top floor of the Kit Carson building. You don't know what is going to occur if and when we enter the JPA. You're making assumptions that you aren't sure of.
But, Mr. Chairman, you, you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Blankenhorn, you just said it yourself is, we don't know what we're getting into at Kit Carson Electric Co-op, and at this point, we're setting our own destiny, and we know for a fact that on that site visit that we did is that Kit Carson Electric has committed their first floor to solely their, their purposes, and that's it. E-911 has the back door to get into the building, and that's it.
Commissioner Romero, I'd also add that you don't have to accept our word for it. Forest Service and BLM and the regional representative who was sent there asked, can we get the first floor instead?
Right.
And they were told by Kit Carson, that is non-negotiable.
Right.
Yeah, well, there's been a lot of things that started out as being non-negotiable. And I don't know... You don't know, nobody knows exactly how all of this is going to play out. All I'm saying is, I don't disagree with any of your assessments. All I'm saying is, if we're making an honest attempt at regionalization, we should go that route, let the regionalized body make these decisions about the CapEx managers and communications that are going to be in place. And, you know, if push came to shove, and the JPA is faced with this situation where they know they want to centralize county OEM and BLM and everything else that we've got going on... And they say the only way we can do that here is if we have this square footage, you don't know that Mr. Reyes isn't going to say, yes, if that's the only way to make this actually a command center, then we'll do that and we'll save the community a million dollars. You can't say that from the podium now. We have to wait and let it play out.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Mr. Blackenhorn, I'm sorry to disagree with you, but this commission has already told this gentleman to move forward. You know, we cannot wait around for, for a JPA. I don't think it was this intent of this commission to wait for a JPA, so, Mr. Chairman, just call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say one more thing, and that is that, yes, I agree with Commissioner Blankenhorn that things have gone our way, but they only started going our way on the annexation, on Kit Carson, on the repeaters, when we negotiated from the position of strength of having alternatives. The minute we don't have alternatives, we've gotten screwed, and I think if you give up having alternatives, we'll be right back where we were.
Okay, and the last thing is, this is very different than having alternatives and writing a check for $364,000. That's the difference. We kept our alternatives open, which was a wise move all the way through, but now you're asking us to write a check for $364,000. We still have this option before we write the check.
That's taxpayer money.
One question, Commissioner, I mean, Ellen. Would this expenditure make that building available to you?
Yep, yes, sir, it would. I mean, we've talked about even at Yanakamato, we don't have an emergency generator back there. I've met with Mark Flores to see if, if I was to stay out there, what we would need to do barring buying a generator, because I know costs are an issue, and I mean, I understand that. I'm not trying, like I say, I'm not trying to take a side in any way, shape, or form. I'm just trying to show that if the money is spent, it's not going to be a waste of money. There are other uses for the facility. I can also go on to say that I doubt very likely that if there is regionalization on the E-911 side, that Forest Service would show an interest in going to Kit Carson. And that's why I say that prepping the building for them is more an surety that they would move out of where they're currently at because they haven't shown any interest to go to Kit Carson, even when their representatives were here from Arizona.
And Richard, the building, the building that we're talking about here, ADA, does that have push-button door openers?
That's the only item that's not ADA compliant. The size of the building doesn't require it, but we can, we can install it. We have to put new hardware on the front door anyways because of the intercom and security, so it's easy enough to put a...
And is that something that we could, if we partner with the Forest Service, because I know they, they have...
They have one dispatcher that's in a wheelchair. She's been to the site, and she was more than adamant to me that, that if she had her, if she, if it was up to her, there wasn't, wouldn't be a second thought about moving to, to Gustor for here. She toured the facility, as is, saw the bathrooms are all ADA compliance, the break rooms, aisles, everything is already in place with the exception of a front door opener.
Versus Kit Carson Electric?
Versus Kit Carson.
All right. Any further, well, call for the vote. We already discussed this, you know?
Yes.
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes. So move on to, let's see here. Planning Department, Rick Bellis, Deputy County Manager, Nathan Sances, Chief Planner, approval of the FY 2012 Title III Funding Plan Contracts and Expenses. Approval of the Title III spending, well, I guess, we'll take one and then A and then B, or they all go together, Mr. Bellis?
A and B.
I didn't, I didn't get one.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. There's one more. That's all right. I got it down. We have it on the screen anyway, so...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as part of this is pure rural schools money we receive under Section Title III, what's known as the Firewise Funding. It has become increasingly restricted in what you can use it for. It can no longer be used for salaries, for example. It has to be used in only those items that can be demonstrated to be an implementation mechanism for the National Firewise Program, for those principles it represents. The federal, the end of the federal year, as everyone's more than normally aware, was September 30th, so we needed to obligate this money. It represents two pots of money, and I'm going to skip down to the lower part first. For the current fiscal year, or the one that just expired, rather, we received $44,371, and that money, anything that wasn't obligated by a purchase order, therefore, we used a state contract for all of these, which is indicated, as well as the purchase order numbers, would have to be returned to the federal government, and that's obviously something we don't want to do if we can avoid it. We've been doing a lot of thinning projects in the neighborhoods, particularly for the elderly, those in rural areas along the Basqueyes, and a wood chipper is an eligible item to assist in that process. Nathan has done a great job, along with working with Edward Martinez and the Solid Waste Department, and so because this is over $20,000, we needed to come to you for your approval, and we're asking you to allow us to go ahead. This is not general fund money, this is the federal government's money, and as I say, if we don't spend it, we return it tomorrow. So we're asking for you to approve a M15 RX wood chipper, and there's a training package that goes along with how to use this for safety purposes, some shields for it, and some other accessories all lumped into that amount.
And, Mr. Bellis, go ahead. I just have a question on, on that wood chipper. That would then be the, we would own that, the county would own that, and then how is it to be used? Because, you know, we talk about anti-donation all the time, you know, and, and then I'll get into the, after you've given me them answers, then I want to get into the actual meat of this wood chipper, you know? We talk about the safety and then the maintenance of this piece of machinery because it's pretty expensive to maintain one of these, and so I just...
Let me first say that this isn't a piece of equipment for liability reasons we would be lending out to anybody.
Okay.
It would have to be used by either our Facilities Department, Solid Waste, Public Works Department, and a log would be kept of how it's used to justify to the federal government that it was being used predominantly consistent with the purposes of the funding.
Okay, my concern is, you know, we, one of the things we just did recently is there was some grant money that we just distributed to do some thinning in Taos Canyon, and I know there was a number of areas that were looked at, and I believe that's all disseminated now, and everybody has their little piece of, that they're going to do thinning. This is not a piece of equipment that's going to be used in conjunction with any of that, I was, I'm hoping.
It would not be used, that was the NFL money, the non-federal lands money.
Right.
And that's to interface with where Forest Service or BLM is doing cutting on their side.
Right.
To match up on the private side. Under those funds, we have to go out and get a firm that we contract to do that work. Now, there is one scenario I can imagine we might use it, and that is that particularly on the steep slopes like in the canyon, what happens is very often when they do the thinning, they have to stockpile whatever's left over because it's too expensive to haul it out, and then usually, we try to make some provision for, with Rocky Mountain or somebody that a lot of that can be used to take to senior citizens for firewood. The ideal situation is to get that load out of the forest completely, so we could have a contract that would leave it in piles where we could access it, and then our crews could take our wood chipper and perhaps take some of that out of there to relieve that load rather than waiting for it to rot out, or the alternative is you have to do a controlled burn.
Okay, because this machine, you know, this machine, the way it's presented and the way it's, is not designed to do bigger diameter stuff, you know, it's more for branches and, and, you know, small branches and stuff, and I, that's, I just want to make sure that we're getting the right machine, and then who's going to be allowed to use it. And I don't have a problem with the expenditure, just so that we, you know, upfront, that we know what's, what's going to be... we know what's going on with it.
And, Mr. Chairman, the primary goal of this, again, is Firewise is the WUII areas, the interface, and we work on the private side for the citizens we represent. Forest Service handles what's on their side of the border. So, the biggest need we saw was we could organize these community cleanup days and volunteer days, but if you just start stacking branches, or we take them to the transfer sites, it becomes a problem. It's much more efficient if, when we bring the sled, we can come back after the cleanup is done and chip it all, put it in the dumpsters, then we have less trips. And actually, the chips can be used at the county, the town's recycling program.
Also on playgrounds, if it has the right specs, so, okay. Commissioners, what's the wish?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. On a second, further discussion?
Where's it going to be stored, Mr. Chairman?
Bellis.
I actually don't have the answer for you on that one at this time.
Not big enough.
At the second floor.
Not big enough.
Because if we want to secure it, we could secure it.
Actually, Commissioner, we can't store federal equipment in the floodplain areas.
And it may not be safe enough either.
So, call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. So, I guess—
Mr. Chairman, the second part of this is, and this actually is the plan, when you approve this spending, so it is A and B. The figures you have on the top half of the sheet represent money that, and I'll be honest with you, we don't know how many years this has accumulated over, but there would be, their total amount of funds is 163,874, and that would be less the money you just approved for us to spend. So, what we wanted to do is, we believe we know how much of this was in the prior fiscal year, and that we probably have permission to spend, and those are the items that you see in actual cost associated with, which is publications for 15,000, solid waste collection fees, and again, that would match up with the chipper. That's to reimburse the county for the tipping fee and the time and labor of the guys to go out on a Saturday. There's a laptop computer and a pad, which would be for the neighborhoods that are actually forming the Firewise presentations, and there's a projector attached to that, so they can do what's required by the federal government, which is to do these instructional sessions for the neighborhoods on the cleanups and Firewise techniques, and that would stay with the county planning department, and we would lend it out to the neighborhoods. It's to also reimburse us for the print heads that we've worn off, the glossy paper, the ink on our plotter, which is very expensive to use for doing all the fire mapping that we've been doing and the neighborhood mapping, and then a scanner to get, to digitize all those maps that we're developing. And to be able to produce for the neighborhoods rather cheaply in an electronic version, maps for insurance purposes and for cleanup purposes. The other two items, the WUII Coordinator and the other one in red, the Firewise Public Education, we want your permission to approve this as a spending plan, but not the actual expenditure of that money, because we believe that there may be a recapture requirement that the county did not, should have returned this money in the past, and we did not, and we don't want to spend it, then come back to you and say, hey, by the way, we need another hundred thousand of money we didn't spend. And unfortunately, we couldn't get an answer before today, because even yesterday, in the last two days, getting through while they were phasing for a close down was pretty difficult. And the rules have been very unclear on this program throughout. There were broad congressional mandates that delegate to the local offices, but they basically didn't give very many guidelines on them. So, we would ask you to approve those expenditures that are on the right-hand side and all of the items listed as a funding plan, so that should we get permission, we've okayed this in the required timeframe and can spend it. If we don't get the okay, we'll return whatever we can't get the okay on.
So, recommendation for a motion, then, to approve at this point?
No move.
I'll go ahead and second. Any other comments, remarks? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Anna. We'll move on, then, to the Item 2, Mr. Bellis, on the status report on the proposed land use regs.
Land use code version that was revised last by Commissioner Blankenhorn is on the web as of today. In consultation with the county attorney, we believed that we did not want to represent this as though people might think that it's passed or it's law, so we did put some caveats in there that it has not yet, you know, it's subject to legal review and passage by the county commission, but we do think that it gets it out there so that it starts the dialogue. And the next step would be, we want to schedule in advance the public hearings, meetings, community meetings, and we wanted to confirm the how many and where, which is, I know we definitely wanted to do one here, one in Pinellasco, one in Cuesta, and I think that was the last direction I received from the county commission. I also think that we weren't quite clear whether we were directed to do one or two in each location, so we wanted some guidance on that.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think two in each location could be the appropriate, and if, in case some people cannot make it to the first one, well, maybe I'll make it to the second one. If they do not make it, and they do not look at it, well—
And with that, what sort of a timeline are we looking at?
Well, we'd like to advertise and really saturate the media and get on the radio shows and stuff for at least two weeks before the meetings, and they can be held concurrently like we did last time, so what I would suggest we do is have a weeknight meeting, so maybe like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we would do the three locations, then we'd come back on the weekend and try to do the three also, and maybe we do them a week apart, no more than that.
So, we're definitely looking at approval, then, sometime in November, early part of December?
We will need to publish the ordinance, which would include, the publication includes, and I defer to counsel, please correct me if I'm wrong, but a summary of the ordinance, but we have to have the full land use code that is going to come before you for consideration available to the public for review in doing that. And my recollection is, we advertised for about a month. We had to advertise, or no, I'm sorry, we're not involved in zoning this time, so it would be the typical requirements for an ordinance. So, that's going to go a little quicker and a little easier. And I would add that while we'll formally announce these six meetings in the three locations, a lot of neighborhood groups have already started requesting us to come and explain certain parts of it, or to go over their neighborhoods or whatever, and staff will be more than able to do that, and we invite any of the commissioners. What we'll do is, we'll email all of you copies of whenever and wherever the meetings are, so that if you want to attend, or so that you have a heads-up if people have complaints from the meeting, that you know why, that there'd been a meeting the night before, and we'll record all those comments and suggestions that the people have, and what we like to do is provide you a summary of that when you get the final draft for your approval.
Let me, Mr. Chairman, let me ask this question. When will copies be available?
I don't want to back the county attorney into how long it's going to take him, given he's got all these other things to do for him to complete his review, but I would not want to start distributing hard copies of it until the county attorney reviews it, and I know the planning department had a meeting scheduled last week that we weren't able to do that we want to go over. There's some grammatical things that we have to realign since the changes, but I wouldn't guess it's any more, then it's not going to be any sooner than two weeks. And, but that doesn't slow us down from going ahead and scheduling the meetings, you know? We just can't schedule the ordinance and the publication of the ordinance.
Hold on, Mr. Chalit.
Just, Rick, just wanted to get out there that we should notify the community groups that are out there, and let them know that it is on the web, just so that they're aware of that. I know they've been asking, and so maybe we should send some kind of letter or formal notification to them that it is out there.
We have a comprehensive email list of all the neighborhood groups, and they'll get a copy of it this afternoon if they haven't already.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just one thing, that last bit of work I did was, just as a direct result of the talks with the, the last week, that we worked on it, we're no longer focusing on those 40 points, but mostly adding building permits to differentiate that from the administrative process that occurs when there's a permit. And that's something that wasn't clear in the ordinance, and something that made the neighborhood concerned with, and so, all of those changes, those changes that were based upon that. And, you know, the numerations haven't been changed, there's all kinds of, like, small technical things that obviously have to be polished up, but I appreciate the fact that you guys got it out there, because like you say, a lot of people have been asking for it, and now it gives us the opportunity to start the discussions, and I guess these meetings are going to need power point, and we're going to have to do it. You know, it's a lot of, it's a lot of technical information, but I think there'll be some sort of bite-sized areas that will be fruitful to discuss, and, you know, so I think they're going to be both informational from our side out and back, just getting the feedback from constituents who are interested in the opportunity, and the Neighborhood Association, and those Neighborhood Associations that are hard at work on their overlays.
And, Mr. Vice Chair, I want to thank Commissioner Blankenhorn for all the time he put in and including the staff in that process, and, yeah, mostly what we have left is just, as you say, where there were changes, there are references to sections that have to be corrected or page numbers or alignments and things like that. So, I think it'll go pretty quick. In fact, I was about halfway through it this weekend on relining it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you. I think we have the direction we were requesting.
Any other questions, comments with regards to the LUR? If not, we'll move on to Item 9, Resolutions, Ordinances, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following, Item May, Resolution Number 2013-54, Resolution Suspending the $5 Minimum Penalty on Delinquent Property Taxes and Imposing the Statutory Civil Penalty for Tax Year 2013. Ms. Trujillo.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, and—
Good afternoon.
—management, and our attorney. Before you is, again, Taos County Resolution 2013-54, and this is, has become an eerily resolution, so I'm bringing it forth again. As it stated, this resolution is suspending the $5 minimum penalty on delinquent property taxes and imposing the statutory civil penalty for tax year 2013, and this is an option that the county commission has to do this.
Okay, and so what are the benefits of this?
It, let's look at the therefore's then. So, therefore, be it resolved by the county, by the governing body of Taos County, that Taos County shall not collect the $5 minimum penalty, and that would be that it is an automatic $5, even on, on, let's say, someone having property in—
Trust pay.
—in the trust pay others area, that that would be automatically assessed, making a double. It would be the, again, that Taos County shall collect a penalty of 1% of the delinquent taxes for each month, or any portion of a month they remain unpaid. So, it is a more lenient type of environment, but total penalty shall not exceed 5% of the delinquent taxes pursuant to Section 7-38-50 Supra, and—
Any other discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Uh.
Is there a motion, Commissioner Doudon? Yes?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just have a question. So, this is actually going to increase the budget? If it be necessary. It's just depending on how the, how long it keep, how long it goes without being paid up to a 5%, and that's the max. And how will you provide dollars? A delinquent letter is sent out.
Is it Monday?
No, it is actually when they become delinquent, in July, after Ju, after, I'm going to say it's a certain date, but it is, there is a cutoff date that, in which they become delinquent, and at that point, a letter is sent out to those that have become delinquent for that year. Let's say it's for the 2012, then a delinquent letter will be sent out that they are delinquent, and then the 1% will be assessed monthly till it's paid, or, and if it's not, it accumulates.
Thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain, I wasn't sitting in on the discussion.
10B is the next.
Next one is 10B?
Yeah.
10A.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Let me just finish.
Thank you, Susan.
Actually, I'm sorry.
10A.
Yeah.
Contracts, Agreements, MOUs, and bids discussing consideration decision regarding the following, Request for Approval of Contract with HEI Inc. for Maintenance and Support of the Video Security System at Taos County Administration Judicial Complex, Conrad Cordova, MIS Director.
Conrad?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. Before you is a request to approve a maintenance contract which supports the security equipment for all of the county. There's multiple parts of our security equipment, which includes all of the cameras, the door swipes, including the jail, the door locks, the recording system at the jail. It's all-inclusive. This contract, let me back up for a minute and give you a little bit of history. When we first took custody of this building, the building came with a two-year warranty that the installing vendor, Accurate Controls, gave with, gave to the equipment, to us, Taos County. Well, since then, the two years has lapsed, and we need a new contract to support the existing equipment. This contract does not have, it's only for technical support and not for the equipment, although it does support the purchase of the equipment through the contractor. The contract amount is in the amount of $34,770, which spans a total of three years, so if you did the math, it's about $11,500 per year, and this money was budgeted, and so we are covered with that. The other option that we have— The other option that we had also, that they had presented us, included insurance on all of the equipment, but we didn't take it, and that was on the order of about $111,000 per year. But we didn't take that because what we found over the last two years, the equipment doesn't break down that often. And also on top of that, the insurance that they provided only covered for the first $3,000 in the equipment. Most of the equipment is rather small in its value amount, although there are some pieces of equipment that exceed the $3,000. One of, there are several pieces of equipment that are on the range of about $35,000, $36,000. And if they broke, that insurance would only cover the first $3,000. So we elected to just go with the non-insurance on the equipment, and we would pay it out of our own budget, which is also, we have some reserves set aside also for equipment in case it fails.
And Conrad, this is your recommendation from staff?
It is. It's the recommendation. This contractor is within the state of New Mexico, and we chose to keep it within the state. That way, we're not sending our GRTs out of state.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Legal, been reviewed and.
Mr. Lopez has worked on this one.
I don't really have any questions. It's been reviewed and all legal and proper?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's referenced as made to the stated pricing agreement, which is attached to the.
Okay.
Prices contained in the contract are the same as those set forth.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not call for the vote. Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes. Yes. Item B, request for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad. Request for Approval of Amendment One to Contract TCC 2011-021 with Summit Food Services LLC for Meal Provisions at the Dalton Juvenile Detention Summit Food Services Representative.
Hi.
Hi.
Good morning, Commissioner, afternoon.
Afternoon.
My name's Melissa Waddes. I'm here on behalf of my boss, Sandra Adams-Cius. And she wanted me to mention, we are very thankful for you all for the, continue the partnership with Taos County. We're very excited about things happening in the jail. They've gotten a new food service director, Patricia Campbell, and she comes to us with a lot of food service experience and has worked at San Miguel County Detention Center also. The money kiosk is now up and running in the entranceway of the jail. This will allow friends and family to deposit money into the inmate accounts, which can be used in commissary purchases or however the county would like to disperse the money. Dwight Alberts and Sandra Adams-Cius, which Dwight is the commissary support manager, are arranging a meeting with the Tiger System, which is from the commissary program. And he's the specialist to demonstrate to the jail staff all of the functions and options they have. They are hoping to have this meeting confirmed this week. And I am here today to represent Summit, and we will provide the county, or we have provided the county attorney with a contract amendment to ask for a CPI over the past year. We would like to ask for your consideration in this approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Mr. Malone on CPI.
Mr. Chairman. The contract is automatically renewed because neither party canceled, so the basic contract is in place. There's provision in the basic contract for a CPI adjustment, and I've been in communication with and negotiating with the general counsel for Summit. Even though the CPI adjustment is only coming to you now, after one quarter is by, Summit has.
Graciously agreed to not.
Look backward, you couldn't anyway because of the impairment, but the CPI adjustment is 1.5% based on the attachment that you have to the end. And that would only be over the, prorated over the portion of the year that remains. So the actual dollar amount that we're talking about is $2,249. It is actually less.
Okay.
CPI increase than CPI information that I was providing in the case for food outside of the home. Food outside of the home is 2%. This is only 1.5%. 1.5% reflects.
The general.
CPI increase.
Got your general.
So move to approve. I will second, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second. Further discussion? Blankenhorn? We have no further discussion. Call for the vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
We can't eat lunch there sometime? No. So, item C, request for approval of a solid waste hauling agreement between Taos County and Taos Pueblo. Mr. Martinez, our solid waste director.
Mr. Chairman, just a very quick comment if I could on this particular item before Mr. Martinez starts. Some of you may remember that, I think it goes back to when Mrs. Martinez was still here as county attorney, you agreed to it different than when they went over to the Pueblo, signature, and they wanted some changes. That's why it's.
Okay, I thought you were going to say the only way we could get a meal out of the jail is if they incarcerated us there, so I wasn't going to volunteer for that.
And Mr. Lopez has actually handled the crafting of the summit contracts.
Mr. Martinez?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Chalit. Yes, I'm just coming back up here to see if I can get re-approved for the, for this contract that we have with the Pueblos. There was just some certain wording that we had to change in order to, so that the Pueblo would feel comfortable with, with this contract.
Mr. Chairman, price still going to remain the same?
Everything's the same, except a little bit of the wording changed.
So move to approve.
I'll go ahead and second, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I mean, it's just minor wording change? I didn't, I couldn't figure out.
Minor wording? I think you had something about recycling, which we didn't do, so they took that wording out.
All right. Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Item D, request for approval of contract with Northern Mountain Contractors, Inc. for the paving of County Road 8102, Kaihun Road. Mr. Chavez?
So move to disapprove. Take that back.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Kaihun Road is getting paved under the 399 Fund. Both three districts, one, three, and two are participating in it. So we've, we've kind of been preparing for this. If you haven't been down Kaihun, you'll see that the big tree that was, that the seller of the real estate was, was not allowed to cut, you know, they climbed the trees, and he wasn't able to do that. We've taken it out along with the stump. All the other trees that were there have been removed. Kind of cleared the weeds in that area in preparation for a surveyor to come and stake out the centerline and the, and the cut stakes, cut slopes, which is after we had another surveyor go in there and survey the acquisition and then give us quantities. There are some quantities for excavation and some great prep. So what's left is, we also put in more base course where it was lacking, where you could see the pit row was already exposed. So we've been doing that in the last couple of weeks. What's left to do is, is of course for the surveyor to come and stake out the centerline, and also for us to prep it for paving, we will find our finished grade as well as put water on it to try to obtain the optimum moisture. So that, I have gotten a commitment, not a commitment, but I asked the contractor, Northern Mountain, when he'd be able to pave. He said he might, he'd be able to start tomorrow. So assuming that we have this contract approved, and we have a PO in place, then the paving work will start rather quickly. And just to also let you know, we used up the entire $150,000 plus, maybe I think $4,000 of my budget. I ask for your approval.
Is this a three-inch?
Three inches.
Three inches. And, and Rick, do we need to come back to the commission for approval to post signs about through truck traffic?
No, you don't.
Okay.
But you know, it's already posted weight limit-wise.
Right, but I mean, there's a lot of the trucks that have been using it, just so we get that enforced, because if not, that pavement won't last long.
So what, what is it, the, what kind of signings do you?
Oh, just no through truck traffic as far as, you know, if somebody's delivering to a house, well, we've got to allow that, but when, you know, just so that there's not through trucks, you know, through there using it as a, as a bypass.
And they're still limited to the eight tons.
Right.
If it's.
Okay. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Commissioner? Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner.
I'm going to abstain. I'm just going to play it cool. I usually lease my equipment to Northern Mountain. I haven't leased it out to them this year. But if they come back and they want to lease it, well, I'll be available, so that's my reason for abstain.
Yes. So item E, request for approval of contract with Northern Mountain, Inc. for paving of County Road C110, Old New Mexico 570. Mr. Chavez?
Mr. Chairman, this is one of the projects under the LGRF, also known as a CAP, COOP, or school bus. Again, this is, this is going through a state purchasing agreement, which is, is in place currently. And this one, again, is District One and District Three. They're putting up their share of that. So I ask for your approval.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. I'll second. Own everybody, fight. Yeah. There was, you know, I want to commend the commissioners. This was collaborative between District One, District Three. The other item was, was collaborative with three districts. I think, you know, by putting our monies together, we get more bang for our bucks. I'd like to really commend the commission in moving forward in, in these directions. And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chavez, from what point?
To what point?
From the finished portion, about .44 miles.
Point four-four? About, to what point is it going to bring us?
It's going to be past the golf course entrance. I think that maybe even up to Los Cor, not up to Los Cor, but pretty close.
Very close to Los Cor, the intersection. As long as it's past the golf course. Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes.
I'm going to abstain for the same reason.
Yes.
Where's the list?
So we go on to.
From Taos News.
Request for approval of a contract with Northern New Mexico Contractors for the paving of County Road B005, Lower Hondo Road. Mr. Chavez?
Again, this is under a current SPA. Lower Hondo Road would also continue the paving that has been going on for a couple of years. In that, in that case, we probably get about .25 miles worth of paving. So we'll just continue on, on the road, and I think it gets to, to about where we milled it last year, probably cover some of that, not much.
To the bridge?
No, no, it won't get us to the bridge.
And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chavez, when will these get done?
I'm glad you asked that. The first, first thing they're going to do is Kaihun to get that done, and, and then the next one is the next item here, which is School Road in Peniasco. Because, you know, we're, our window is really getting short now, and because it's higher up, we're going to do Peniasco School and then go over to Lower Hondo. So what's really governing this or dictating it is the weather.
C110 would be when?
Oh, yeah, C110.
You're hoping to get them done before winter, then?
Hoping to get it done before the end of October. And C110, you know, either that or Lower Hondo, depending on where he wants to, where you got his equipment. He probably want to come down from, from Peniasco and then be here local and then go down to Lower Hondo.
We have a motion for approval? So move, Mr. Chairman. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes.
I'll abstain for the same reason.
Yes. So we go on to request for approval of contract with Northern Mountain Contractors, Inc. for paving of County Road C046, as known as the School Road. This is the road that leads to the school. Mr. Chavez?
This is a road that goes through the high school. It's in pretty bad shape. What we're going to do in preparation for that is we're going to mill it, prep it, put it down tight, and then, and then allow for the paving. In this, in this case, for this project, this is only 640 feet long from the gate to New Mexico, New Mexico 75. But in order to use up all the money, we're going to have over four inches of pavement as opposed to three inches in some of your other districts. So, which is good because of the bus, busloads.
Especially the turning rate and turning area.
Only at the intersection. When you get to the gate, you kind of like go.
Right away.
Not a very sharp.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. I'll second. Further discussion? Sure you want that, Duncan?
Yes. No.
Call for the vote. Yes.
Yes.
I'll abstain.
Yes. And Rick, well, go ahead. I'll let you.
Chairman, also to point out, Commissioner Sanchez isn't here, and nobody's concerned about his project. You've got to let him go without a project. No, to mention that his project was Albergadero, and we have completed, completed the work there. In fact, it was completed last Tuesday, and we did a little over half a mile of double penetration. So if you're in the area, I haven't gone to look at it since it was completed. We hadn't swept it to get the loose chips off. So please go and look at it, and hopefully it'll hold up, and the intent is to go another half mile with the next cycle of funding.
And Kaihun, Rick, will the speed bumps be replaced fairly quickly after the paving?
That'll depend on when they're able to batch again. My intent is to, while they're batching for Kaihun, hopefully to go to Lower Hondo and get that done, you know, pick up, we'll have to put in a PO, hopefully get it back timely, and do that work. And then Kaihun then is going to have to, we're going to have to work with the supplier to see when it's going to batch.
Okay, just so we get it in before.
Now, the other question, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, we'll certainly put the ones we had there back.
Yeah.
Is that all that's?
Well, will depend on your recommendation.
Well, I think according to your ordinance, they'd have to come back with petition and request, request more.
Okay. All right. At least the ones that were there, because I know with the pavement, it's going to really increase the speed in, in the curved area. It shouldn't, in the straightaway, it doesn't matter, because they're going to go faster to get over them. But on that curved area where the houses actually are and the residential area, we want to make sure those are.
Yeah, and in the straight portion, there's not a lot of residences, three or four houses on the right-hand side come in this direction. So the safety issues are critical there.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Rick, if I could just ask you to brief the commission briefly on, we've had several complaints on Kaihun from a couple of different landowners, and Mr. Mondragon, and I believe there was Mr. Behill. Could you just brief the commission on that?
Larry Mondragon, who I guess happens to own land there, I wasn't aware of that, but when we were preparing to put more, more base course down, there was an area on his property that we had throughout the years kind of encroached with, with the material. So the operator was trying to get that, some of that out to, to correct that, and I guess Mr. Mondragon saw that and misunderstood. There was some kind of back and forth, but, but the intent is to go ahead and pave, and then after the paving, then go in there with a backhoe and pick up some of that material. There is a fence underneath there, which is, you know, it can be claimed that we knocked it down or perhaps not, but we'll have to deal with that after we're done with it. And then the other issue is from Andrew Behill, who is right there at the curve. He has a property and his son has a business right there. His concern is that he can't get up onto the road as it exists now. I told him that we, we wouldn't address that because the alignment's changing, and part of the design from the engineer was to. of the design from the engineer was to, you know, connect those two, Ambrosio, and that turned out, so we will look at that. I don't know that we'll be able to address his concerns about drainage. It is surrounded curve, so we might have a super that puts the water on the, on the inside, so those are issues that we'll look at as, as we go with the work.
And the, the Tom Holder, that issue, Tom Holder...
With, with, Mr. Tofoya?
Tofoya? And then, and then the lady up on top?
Nora?
That's all been...
Well, we have a meeting to go look at Cuchilla on Friday at 1:30. Unfortunately, I just got a message from Gil, he wants to move it to Thursday, I don't know what your schedule is like, but you can advise me. Which leads me to the meeting with, with Nora Martinez, or whatever her last name is. I met with her and with Pablo, Pablito, who's Pablo's son. They say that at that ramp, let's call it a ramp, that there was a, a culvert along, on Cuchilla, that opened up onto that ramp, which also had a culvert there and conveyed the water down, downstream, and that is a natural, like a natural flow before there was a road there. Which would help us, because we pick up some of the waters, I said in the previous meeting, all the water comes down from Cuchilla, does not outfall for the most part until it gets to Tom Holder. That would help us pick up, pick up about a third of that distance. I don't know about volume, but the other thing is that, as it comes out of those two culverts, it was going to the irrigation ditch that ends up at Gil's place anyway. So, but according to Pablito, that there, that ditch kinda veers off somewhere, and then another one continues, or another section of it, so that might be a possibility that some of that water will be dissipated between that distance. Since then, since that meeting, which I was gonna, you know, ask for direction about putting in culverts, not only on Cuchilla, but on a private section, Nora called me again and said that Pablo Senior had come and said, "I don't want no culvert," so I don't know what kind of, I don't know, I guess I'm gonna have to talk to, to the senior and see what his concerns are. But the other thing, and to address Gil's, Gil's concerns, is that after the, the development for the Abetas, again, the one with the double, the double wider park, that water goes inland, let's call it, into the southwest, and goes in and continues for a ways, until it gets almost to Tom Holder, then it falls out into the road. As I, as I mentioned before, that thing has been obliterated by traffic, we have to go back in there and establish that flow, redirect it into that culvert that's at, that's at the intersection of Tom Holder, or rather, Cuchilla and West Romero, continue it downstream to Giovanas, who has another concern, so, but our intent is to, is to increase or to put in a bigger culvert there, which means that we have to raise the grade of the road somewhat, gonna be a little bit of expense here with the repaving. Also, right after you go over that culvert, there's a mailbox that we'll probably have to remove and reset, build up that, that portion and, and reset it. So all of that is kinda in the works, you know, we've got priorities with caihon and others, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Budget matters, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following DFA resolution, Mr. Cordova, Finance Director, and number four, a resolution requesting to digest FY 2014 final budget to account for a grant obtained for JDC Para Coordinator?
Should actually be Chairman, Prea, sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this DFA resolution is pretty simply, we're gonna, we're gonna establish the revenue side of it, which is $25,000. You guys have seen this grant a few meetings ago, Ms. Gonzalez presented it to you. We've already received the money, so we're gonna create the revenue side, and we're gonna create the expenditure for a contractor, which they will be hiring as soon as this resolution's approved.
Contractor for what?
To do prison rape...
Elimination Act.
Elimination.
Is this a grant that our director went out and got, or how did this... I commend you for going out and finding grants to help our facility, I really appreciate that. Commissioners, what's a wish?
Mr. For approval?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just want...
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanna note that it is extremely important that Ms. Gonzalez went out and got this grant. Basically, all our federal funding would be in jeopardy had we not moved forward to get this Prea Prison Rape Elimination Act in place, and by having a contractor here, getting the policies and procedures in place, it puts Taos County on a good standing with the federal government in the near future. By 2014, I believe, is, this has to be all in place and, and move forward, so that's how important it is that any of our federal funding would have had to, been put on hold had we not had this grant in place.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not call for the vote.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
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 Yes. So we'll go on to number five, a resolution request to transfer salary expenditures of an administrative assistant position to the ADC, to administration due to recent reorganization.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, that administrative position was moved from the adult center over to the commission, I mean, to the county manager's budget, and so we're taking the exact budget of that position from the detention center, moving it back over to our general fund, which so it can be used in the manager's budget.
Move to approve. I will second.
Now, motion and a second, further discussion? Not call for the vote.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Daganer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We'll go on to item B, one, budget line adjustment, Mr. Cordova, and our finance, Finance Department.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Finance Department's requesting a budget adjustment to bring the position, it was a position that was in the facilities management, it's currently held by Ms. Gina Elam, she'll be coming up to the Finance Department. We feel that she'll have a better fit with us up there in the Finance, she'll still continue to do the services she's providing for facilities. This is a temporary move for six months at this time, to see how everything works out, but we feel like we need, could use some help in our purchasing department, so she'll be helping us in purchasing, and she'll also be backing up our payroll department, as well as doing all of the duties of facilities as, still at that time, doing their payroll, doing payroll for Mr. Sanchez in construction.
Move for approval?
No. We have a second? I'll second. Is she gonna, discussion, is she gonna be cross-trained then?
Yes, yes.
I know in that department, we need some cross-training on some of them...
This also gives the Finance Department a step up on our reorganization, gives us that separation of duties for a couple other, we're gonna be able to cross-train other people, our purchasing officer will cross-train with our fire department, we're gonna have payables cross-training with assets, and so this is just one part of our whole reorganization up there in the department.
You said to the, to help out where? The purchasing, right?
Yes, she'll be helping us...
Is the person there that we have there now having problems?
We've had quite a number of purchasing, I mean, purchasing has increased quite a bit, and she is also still new to the position. We felt that the experience that Ms. Elam had in the position prior will help alleviate some of that workload, and let her focus on other things like RFPs, invitations to bid, that we are needing to get out there. And also, this position will be backing up payroll, which is a very essential function. We don't currently have a true solid backup for payroll. By having this person come in and learn that function, we'll have a much better backup for the county. It's, right now, Ms. Martinez is kinda stuck, we don't let her take off, if she's sick, she's not allowed to be sick, not if someone wants to get paid, so...
Right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
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 Yes. EMS, Taos Ambulance?
Chairman, Commissioners, this budget adjustment for the EMS department is, they want to put more money into a part-time position, taking it out of full-time position. They would like to reclassify an employee from a full-time to a part-time position, I believe it'll be discussed a little further detail later, but I do recommend approval.
This is a recommendation of staff, Mr. Arzalda?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Move for approval?
Okay.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chairman?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cordova. County Managers Report on Matters, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following potential attendees to the New Mexico Association of Counties Midwinter Conference, January 21st through the 23rd, 2014.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, basically, what we're doing is taking names of potential commissioners that would like to attend the midwinter conference for NMAC. Again, we wanna get, a lot of times what happens is we're behind the curve if we don't get our room reservations in on time, and commissioners have to stay, or staff have to stay at other hotels, rather than at the hotel where the conference is being held, and so we're just putting that out there, I'd ask the commission to please consider this, and then if they could possibly give me their names of who would like to attend that conference.
Mr. Chairman, I will attend.
I will, I would like to attend.
Okay.
I will, 'cause I haven't, there's a lot of money in my budget, I haven't used it.
Haven't used any.
Commissioner Daganer? Yes? Okay.
Maybe we can get you to be the...
Chair.
I'll check with Commissioner Sanchez.
So, I guess the next one is USFC Phase Two, Miranda Canyon?
Yes, Commissioners, I just wanted to update the commission that, as you saw in the email that I received from Greg on September 20th, that Phase Two of the Miranda project has been completed. I know that some of the commissioners have already gone up there, have, have looked at that, they have offered to take other commissioners if in the future we wanna do that. There is a map attached to that, and as you can see, it's huge parcels of lands that are being acquired, and so Phase Two has completed, and they're looking at moving into Phase Three. Because of the state of the federal government right now, we're not sure how, how quickly that's gonna move, but we just wanted to alert the commission that your due diligence and your support of this project has been fruitful, and we now have completed Phase Two of that.
Do have a question, you know, I know that a lot of this land in there, I believe in the tour that I went on, there was, there's a lot of forested land that needs to be thinned, or some kind of mitigation done to, so that, you know, the possibility of forest fires in that area. Is there some of this funds, or some of these grants that come available, can that be used in, in that area?
Let me call Greg and talk to him, and see if there's anything that we can do in a partnership with our NFL grants, or any of the other grants that we've been, we've been looking at for thinning projects?
Right, 'cause I know some of that is...
It was pretty, pretty bushy in there when we went in.
Right, and I think there's something that needs to be done to mitigate some of the fire problems that we might have. Go ahead.
Any other questions, Commissioners? I just wanted to update you on, on that, moving forward, like I said, we, we had done that probably about four months ago, and it's nice to see that that has actually continued to move forward.
So, Mr. Chairman, there are, we're acquired, the Forest Service has acquired Phase One and Two?
Correct.
So there's still Phase Three and Four?
Phase Three is up next. Again, because of the sequestration, we're not sure exactly how quickly that'll move forward. It has gotten good reviews, and at the federal level, we have all our senators and representatives basically supporting it, so we're hoping that that'll continue to move forward.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is a good thing that's, that's happening for, for Taos County, the community, people who wanna enjoy the forest, but on the other hand, we're also losing the property taxes from this. However, we'll gain some of it back through, through PILT, through the PILT funding. Any idea if, if that's in the works already?
We have, we have mentioned that, Mr. Chairman, and as the commission will see here in the, in the near future, we've actually sent out the, or will be sending out the RFP for the lobbyists this year. Part of that requirement for that lobbyist is that we look at that PILT funding, we look at all the other federal funding that's available to us, because, you know, the other, the other option of that, Commissioner Romero, is that we're also gonna be looking at tourism, hopefully coming in because of this land acquisition that's out there, so we're moving along on all those fronts, and hope to continue to move in that direction, but as soon as we know anything different on the PILT funding, we'll appraise the commission of that information.
One of the things that we really need to, you know, applaud this move to is, you know, that is one of our biggest watersheds in the county, and by actually purchasing it, it...
Protects.
Protects that watershed, so I think that's a win-win, and that's why, one of the reasons I was asking about the, the forest and, and stuff in that area, because if we get a forest fire up there, it actually contaminates the, the watershed also, so we need to be pretty adamant about moving forward with some kind of plan, so, thank you.
Yes, sir, will do.
Anything on, more on this item?
That's it.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and go on to item C, this was added on to the agenda, an item on Ms. Candace.
Would you like to have her speak first, Mr. Arzalda?
That's fine, Mr. Chairman, it's... Candace, would you like to?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, staff, Mr. County Manager, and viewing audience. I have all the documentation, if, if you want it, I believe Ms. Chairman, or Commissioner Duran has not seen that, but if you'd like some documentation, I do have that. I am respectfully asking the commission to formally review the bid process of the videotape contract, including the following matters, how the scope of work went out, why GRTs were not put in the equation, why administration felt that no suitable applicant had applied, and what, if anything, U&amp;M promised in addition to the scope of work that may have swayed the county. And the facts, as I see it, I got the scope of work August 26th, I returned it September 4th, was asked to return it in five days, but I was waiting for clarification from legal, and consequently, I returned it several days late. The bid asked for a singly, a single hourly rate for video, but did not include post-production, and that made it to me an unfair bid, and gave the appearance of eliminating other small businesses. Who would want to bid on an incomplete bid and lose money? Plus, U&amp;M wrote the scope of work, I was personally told this by the person who helped. Why wasn't I contacted? I would've pointed out that you can't shoot and hand over a memory card, it has to be taken out of the camera, ingested into a computer, put on an editing timeline with titles, then converted for cable casting on Channel 22, and this process takes approximately at least the same hours to encode on my computer. So in the past, the scope of work considered where the bidder pays GRTs. I live in the county, I pay GRT taxes, and I was told my bid went over, and maybe if you calculate an eight-hour meeting, 24 meetings out of the year, but the average meeting, you know, based on my 27-plus years of taping these, is seven, or five hours, so I'd be in the, the budgeted amount. Besides, I'm willing to negotiate, had I been given the opportunity, as the scope of work appears to give allowance for add-ons during contract negotiations. So are you really saving money? Is that the issue? Is it a bid favoring an entity who will use this to balance their budget, giving a meager amount to a camera operator, all the while using town, state, federal, and now county money to augment a digital media arts program at U&amp;M? This action, however unintentional, sends a message that small business has been edged out by a larger entity, effectively undermining businesses like mine for future contracts with the county. And I hope the commission will take a look at this. Funds come out of your line item budget, perhaps you would consider directing staff to follow whatever rules are mandated in bid procedures, making sure there's an understanding of what's involved in videotaping before a scope of work goes out. a scope of work goes out. Obviously, I want to continue the relationship with the county, and I do sincerely appreciate your time and consideration of this matter.
Thank you.
And I wanted to make a comment. At one point, Mr. Bellis said he'd shoot himself if I wasn't in these meetings. Well, I'm here right now, so I know you haven't shot yourself.
Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the County Manager and, as legal, will probably chime in here in a minute. We have an obligation to keep within budget, and we have an obligation to get the best possible quote that we can for Taos County. This process was a quote process that was put forward. It by no means was in any way intentional, and we basically were just moving through the process as we would with any other bid, with any other quote that we would get for Taos County. We are in no position to bid a large entity against a small business or a small business against a large entity. We're just trying to do the county's work and do it in the most efficient way, and also making sure that we keep the county budget in place. As you can tell by today's meeting, if we add up the bid or the quote that came in at a five-hour meeting, we would fall within the budget of what was actually bid out by Candace. Unfortunately, and our experience has been, is that our meetings don't last five hours. Today's meeting has actually gone closer to six and seven hours as we've been here this morning. And above that, we also -- there was the additional add-on of the post-production, which I agree is a lot of work, and that needs to be done in order to get it ready for Channel 22. But we also have a budget, and Mr. Malone can chime in, because we've sat and discussed this on several different occasions and have actually tried to do the math the best that we could, reference the quote that came in to Taos County. And so, Bob, I'm not sure if you want to add anything at this point. I'm just saying we're trying to do the best we can with the scope of work and the items that we have in front of us, and making sure that we do the best possible, our due diligence for staying within our budget and making sure that we have a good product to give to our constituents. I'll stand for any questions after Mr. Malone.
There are a couple of things that were factually incorrect, and I need to be sure that those are corrected. Number one, U&amp;M did not prepare the scope of work. The only information that U&amp;M provided, which was technologically absolutely necessary, was the format in which they broadcast. What format does the video have to be delivered to them in? They provided that. That's the only thing that they provided. The scope of work was prepared in conjunction, in part with Renee and Renell, but primarily by me. And let me lay a quick background so that everybody understands why we've got the post-production work that Candace was talking about. That's something that anybody is going to have to do, whether it's Candace, one of the other people that are in the video business in Taos or U&amp;M. The format that ultimately comes out of whatever camera is used has to be in the form that's broadcast on Channel 22. In the past, up until, I think it was about a year and a half or two years ago, a different organization did Channel 22's broadcasting. It was not U&amp;M. I don't remember the name of the organization, but a different organization did that. And back at that time, Candace produced a CD or DVD, I guess, and they were able to broadcast using the DVD. When U&amp;M took over Channel 22's operation, they upgraded and modernized the operation and began to broadcast in a more modern digital format than had previously been used. And at that time, it became necessary for whoever did our video work to provide the video in the format that could be used. And so when you take into account the -- and let me just explain further that what Candace provided was entirely appropriate under the scope of work. She broke it down into two parts. She gave an hourly charge for being at the meetings and another hourly charge for converting the video to the format that is used to broadcast on Channel 22. I need to be very, very clear that the U&amp;M has not offered to do anything other than what they're doing here today, which is filming and providing the digital material to Channel 22 operation to be broadcast. There was one other comment that Candace made, and I'm trying to remember, Candace, I can't remember what it was, that factually was incorrect. I've forgotten what that was. Maybe it'll come up in questions. But the only other thing that I want to add, well, two other things that I want to add. Number one, based upon U&amp;M agreeing to do the work for not to exceed amount that falls below what, substantially below what Candace's would be if calculated over what potential meeting lengths and number of meetings are. So it was a less expensive alternative. The contracts, and those were -- I don't know if Floyd is here, he's not here, but the contracts with U&amp;M were handled by Floyd, and they've already been signed. They're here doing the work. I recall what the last thing was I wanted to mention. Candace spoke of this as a bid process, and it's very important to understand, this is not a bid process under the procurement code. Because of the amount of this purchase, it's a small purchase, it comes under our internal procurement policies. It's a written quote process. And so it's not a highly formalized process. It's one in which the department that's seeking the services reaches out to various potential providers of the services to obtain written quotes. And it's important also to understand that even though, because U&amp;M is a fellow government entity, it was not required to follow any procurement process with them, we went ahead and followed our normal internal procedure. We did that to be sure that people like Candace had a fair opportunity to compete for this work. We could have gone directly to U&amp;M and just negotiated because they're a government entity. We didn't do that. We wanted to go above and beyond and be fair to the other folks in the community. I'm not sure that there's a lot more that I can fill in, but I certainly am available along with Steve for any questions.
You have one question, Bob, or Steve. You know Candace made, there was some talk about it takes four, five hours or something to film one of our meetings, or eight hours, or whatever, how many hours. Then she made reference, or somebody made reference to, there's, besides the recording of the meeting, then there's another set time that takes to actually format it to then be able to be played on Channel Two. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, that's our understanding. Basically, it takes about the equal amount of time. So if you have a six-hour meeting, there's six hours after that that has to be formatted. And Candace can probably talk a little bit more intelligently about this than I can, but that's my understanding. And so when the bid came in, it was for $45 for the actual recording, and then $35 for the actual development of that or the conversion of that recording, which takes about the equal amount of time. So in our calculations, as we looked at it, you take a six-hour meeting, and you add those two, the 35 and the 45, because it's still going to take another six hours to get that ready and prepared for U&amp;M, it comes out to about $80 an hour at six hours for that meeting. And so that's how we try to estimate the best calculation that we could, based on the number of meetings that we have per year, and also the length of the meetings that we have going on.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
I see Candace nodding her head in disagreement. I'd like to hear that point from her.
I think that's where I was getting at. I don't know.
Chairman, Staff, the average meeting over all these years is five hours. There are seven-hour meetings, but then there are two-hour meetings, three-hour meetings, four hours. And if I could go through every single meeting for the last 10 years and do an average calculation. Now, if it goes over six, then maybe continually it would be over budget. But there was also a clause in my contract that said if you exceeded over your amount, you had to stop. Not, I didn't, I did not anticipate any change in how the meetings have run, and so I believe I'm in the range. May I comment on a few things?
Sure. Well, Candace, I did have the question, though. So let's say the meeting averages five hours, and it was $45 an hour. I guess that's what the range was. And so we're looking like $8,600, something in that vicinity. Now, is there an additional charge for you formatting the meetings to fit the Channel 22?
I'm not sure where you get the $8,600.
Well, I don't know. Forty-five times five times 24. Average meetings per year?
Twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, 24 meetings.
Yes.
So we had 24 meetings?
Mr. Chairman, just so we're clear on that, we assumed 26 because we sometimes add special meetings, and I think it's reasonable to say we normally do have more than just 24.
I have never taped many special meetings, and it's usually 23 meetings because there's not a meeting in November.
Okay.
Or December. So it's really more like 23.
Go ahead, Candace.
I still, I'm going to argue it was an incomplete bid because it only asked for recording time, and, do you have a counter? I'm sorry to bother you. May I ask him how many hours you've taped now? You don't? Okay. So this is usually an exception. So that's why I believe I'm still in the same process. I do not believe it's substantially lower unless U&amp;M, it's not a fair bid, because they still have to go back and adjust it, put titles on, render it, you know? So they still have to do the same thing, but yet that detail wasn't asked for in the bid. If you are only following internal procurement policies, I'd like to know what they are, you know? I mean, if they were followed according to how it's supposed to be. I'm really sad that you've signed this contract. I'm wondering, how many other businesses did you ask to bid on this?
I didn't handle that. We can provide that information to the Commission, but Renell contacted, I think, something in the range of five or six that she was able to find phone numbers for. Some of them were out of business, and some of them were not interested.
Right, well, Commissioners, I guess it's in your hands. I just don't think it was fair to begin with, and I don't believe I'm substantially below. I'd like you to just review this and see, because it's unfortunate that this has happened.
Chairman, I should have mentioned one procedural thing. If it is the inclination of the Commission to override this decision of staff, that would have to be done in another meeting, because this was not noticed for that purpose. We've always been flexible about discussing things that Commissioners want to put on the agenda, and that's appropriate, but it would not be appropriate for this to be an action item.
Mr. Archuleta?
I think just one other question, Mr. Chairman, that you were asking, that I just want to clarify. Again, if today we had a six, six-and-a-half-hour meeting within Taos County, that would equate to a $45 for that six-and-a-half hours. Additionally to that, there's an additional six-and-a-half hours that's going to be charged at $35, which is where I get to my $80 mark. So if you go six-and-a-half times 80, just to simplify it, then that's how you get to the total at 24 meetings per year. And so that's how we were looking at it, and that's how we were looking at trying to stay within the budget for projections throughout the year. So I hope I clarified that for you.
One, Mr. Chairman, one thing I'd add to what Steve mentioned, and that is, we need to take into account the most recent experience that we've had in how long meetings last, and quite frankly, they have gotten longer in recent years. And in addition, we're facing a lot of very time-intensive items that are going to come before you. For example, the land use code. I know we're not going to do it the way we did it last time, but it's not realistic to think that we're going to be able to resolve the land use code issue without adding at least one additional meeting that's probably going to go on for eight hours, maybe two days, I don't know exactly. But in making the decision about where we would come out under each of the two proposals, we have to take into account things that are on our agenda, on our plate, that are going to take up the Commission's time.
Candace, final remarks?
Chairman, I am willing to negotiate. It's like apples to oranges, and if truly U&amp;M is doing this for 45 an hour in six hours, they're undercutting everyone in the market here. Who can make a living on that? They have equipment from the town they're using, they're using their equipment. Sure, they can come in at a lower bid and not give you a complete bid and probably bring the contract back up to what it was. You know, that's what I'm guessing, that that's why I don't think it's fair. And I'm willing to go through it all the last year and do exact totals to see what the average meeting is, because this one may be six, but the next one may be three.
Ms. Candace, let me just clarify something. Forty-five to film, then 35 to...
That was floating. I wanted to give an honest bid. I don't believe U&amp;M gave an honest bid of what's really involved.
But it's the $35 to...
That was the add-on. Yeah, I mean, if you look at just my 45 and take away that add-on, which I understand is negotiable, and you'll see that I'm, it's probably pretty much in line, especially if I'm paying you GRT taxes.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we can't make a decision on it today, but I would like to see the item back on the agenda again for further consideration. You know, I appreciate, Mr. Sanz Esteban is here with U&amp;M, and there's nothing personal against U&amp;M or the individual behind the camera. I just feel that, you know, if we're going to support small business and individuals trying to make a living in Taos County, that's what we have to do. And I will just leave it at that, at this point.
Will do, Commissioner. Ron Corrigan, you have it.
Come.
So.
Mr. Chairman, if.
Go ahead.
It could be put on in November. I have a, I will be having surgery on the 14th, so.
All right. And, and I guess I'd turn to our attorney. Would this then be probably discussed in open session and then moved to closed session because we already have a contract in place with another entity? And I don't know what type of expenses they've gone to, to purchase equipment and the possibility of litigation coming back to us is?
Mr. Chairman, there is a possible path to closed session, but just the possibility of litigation is a potential.
Okay.
Threat of litigation.
Okay. All right.
And I'm sorry I brought this to you, but I just felt the scope of work was so incomplete that it, I, I, when I first saw it, I knew U and M was going to get the contract.
All right. Thank you. So as we move on with Commissioner's report, discussion, considerations, decisions regarding the following, October meeting calendar, commissioners?
Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta? Oh, Mr. Chairman. On the meeting with Water Advisory Board, the chairman, would you?
Well, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, as in looking at the October calendar, then I put that in, it's probably the last page in your packet. This was at the request of Commissioner Romero. We're going to try to get this calendar with as many activities that are going on within the county so that the commissioners can take that home and they can plan their calendars accordingly to see if they can attend any of those. And looking at that, there's just no way we can get it done by next Tuesday because we need to get the commitments from the state engineer and also from Mr. Harmon to come in. So we were looking at possibly October 29th as a possibility for that. We'll touch base with the state engineer, Mr. Harmon, and the water advisory board to just make sure that everybody's okay with that date, unless the commission has an alternative date that they would like to consider for that.
I'd like to ask some from the commission. Instead of being on the 29th, could we have it on the Monday? You know, because sometimes I work out of town and, you know, for me to miss out on two days, I'd rather just miss out on one, but, you know.
Again, that would be depending on the date that, it would be recommended, we could recommend it on the 28th, but.
Shoot for the 28th.
Working with the schedules of, of the, what is it called?
The state engineer.
Engineer's office and them.
Let me, let me go ahead and call those. We could look. The only reason that I had not requested that on the 22nd is because there's the infrastructure conference for finance, and this is on guidance on capital outlay that starts on the 22nd and 23rd. So staff will be attending that to make sure that we package our capital outlay items properly. But we could look at the 21st also if we're going to consider moving those two Mondays at, that would be fine.
First or 28th?
Twenty-first or 28th?
Okay.
That's okay with the commission?
Chairman, the 28th would be a lot better for me.
Okay. Okay. We'll shoot for the 28th then.
Also, there is a, I guess Walmart is having a, a re-grand opening or, I guess a re-grand opening on the, what day was that?
That is October 18th, Mr. Chairman.
And they've invited us if we'd like to go. I know that hopefully we can bring back a resolution or a, to the commissioner on, on our Tuesday meeting for ratification.
Mr. Chairman, also, maybe with the advisory, Water Advisory Board work study, we could throw in an update from Holy Cross Hospital on whatever is, is coming up with them. I know that overnight through social media, there was discussion on the CEO applying for another CEO position in, in Colorado, but from what I understand, he, he did not get that position. So kind of wondering exactly as to what the status is with, with the hospital board. I think it's, it's very critical, no pun intended, that we keep up to date on whatever is going on over there.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, we'll go ahead and add that. If I could just indulge you for a second on the 4th, which is this Friday. Also, if you could add to your calendars, U and M Taos is having a public reception at the Taos Country Club. It's a 10-year reunion for that, and they've invited the commission to attend that and staff also. So it's from 4:30 to 7:30 at Taos Country Club. As Commissioner Broni stated, on the 18th, Walmart will be having their re-grand opening again, and so staff will be working on, on some of the issues there to see what we can bring forward to, to recognize that. The 18th Annual New Mexico Infrastructure Finance Conference is going to be held on the 22nd and 23rd if, and that's to look at guidance on capital outlay projects. If any commissioners would like to attend that also, please let me know so that we can make reservations and also RSVP so that the commission can attend that or commissioners can attend that.
Where's that capital outlay?
I'd have to get the email to you. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but.
The casino.
Twenty-second and 23rd.
In Albuquerque, though?
Sandia? Just let up.
All right. Anything else on this item, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, the, the Taos News has its.
Oh, yeah.
Open house, what is it? Introduction of the individuals that were named to the Talisiones section for the Taos News, and that's at the Montez Sagrado. I, I plan to attend for a short while, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if other commissioners will be there, so maybe the, the staff could announce that there might be a possible form. Is it necessary?
I don't think, I mean. As long as we don't all. Commissioner, I'd stipate you appear.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
Treat you to a dervs.
Those are noted on there. It's, that would be on October 9th. Also, there's going to be a veterans' meeting here. The lieutenant governor will be here on October 16th from 3 to 6. It'll be here in commission chambers, and those are also noted on your calendar.
And I stand corrected, I'd buy you a, a soft drink. Thank you. So is that all on this item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We'll go on to the quarter cent tax.
Money.
Money that was years ago supposed to have been set aside. I don't know what happened to that. Commissioner Duran, this is your item.
Yeah, I think Mr. Cordova has the answer.
Um, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I don't have the complete answer. I have gotten enough direction to go find the answer at this point. It does look like it was a 16th of a, of a percent increment passed in '08, and Mr. Yeo has helped me also remember. Through her memory, we will figure it out between the two of us. As far as the revenue coming in, it is being accounted for already in the public works budget. So that budget's already, I mean, the money's been already put into the budget. The line item of the special revenue was moved into maintenance of grounds and roadways. So the money that was left over from last year's budget line item, which was the first year I was able to see it, actually separated into a specific line item.
Okay. But let me ask this question, oh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
When you figure it out that there is this amount of money, then since the budget has already been made, we cannot put it on a different line item, or we can?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we could. The problem is that that money has been expended relatively quickly here coming up to try and get the projects done before winter, and there may not be the entire amount of what was remaining of last year. I can now, knowing that it's a 16th, determine exactly what it would potentially be?
It generates from 88,000 to 90 or 92, somewhere in there. So when you find it, just put 16,000 aside.
Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, in reviewing that budget this morning, it seems like there's approximately about 28,000, Mr. Cordova, that's still left in the Public Works Department fund that's there. The rest of that money had actually gone to buy Scoria or to stockpile the Scoria. Mr. Chavez is here, he can also address this. We are anticipating a harder winter and because we had depleted the majority of that stock, we needed to, to get that stock back in place. So it's going to be, I guess the commission will have to make a determination. I know as, as projects have come up and as the commission has requested on several roads for base cores, for pit run, for some of those different items, Mr. Chavez has accommodated those. There is 28,000. If, if we can maybe get a, I guess, a ballpark from the commission as to what you individually are looking for within your districts so that we can sort of get an idea of that. For me to separate 28,000 or 16,000 out of the 28,000 would be a little difficult, meaning that we basically have a remaining budget of 12,000 for the rest of the year within that line item. So I'm not sure, Commissioner Dudon, if there was something specifically that you were looking for, a specific road, a specific situation that there was. I think with staff could look at that individually from the commissioners and then try to prioritize those as, as we move along.
Well, see, when I asked for this, no, I know probably I directed you people when we did the budget that that was supposed to be on a line item by itself. No, I, no, it didn't happen, no. I think it's a little too late, but my request was, you know, that I get, I think it comes out to 16,000 for each district. And after all this range that we had, that was my proposal that, you know, at least I spotload material where it was needed in different county roads, you know? Because 16,000 ain't going to buy you much. It'll probably get me like 1,200 tons, you know what I mean? But at least I show interest and try to help our constituents, you know, that they're not just driving on rocks, you know what I mean? But, you know, I think now it's a little bit too late, no? But, you know, next year, I do want it separated on a different line item, and that's where it should be.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I, I again don't, I, I hear what you're saying and the direction from the commission as far as for, for the following year. I still don't think that it's too late. Again, if you could give me those priorities of what those are, we can see how we can accommodate those priorities. I don't think it, you know, if, if we can, you know, look at 12 tons or 16, 16 tons and we can get that on the road specifically, I can work with our, our public works director to see where, if we can get that over there and get that accomplished for you this year.
I'll give you a, I'll give you a list within a couple of days. I got it all up here. No, because, you know, the thing about it is I'm the type of commissioner that I do drive my county roads, and I know where it's needed.
And from the other commissioners also, if, if you guys have a couple of other roads, I know we've had quite a few complaints to the county. We've been addressing those, Piedmont Street and some of these other roads as, as they've come on.
That's one of my teams.
Yeah. Right. And we're actually addressing that. We've, Mr. Chavez and myself have actually been out there. We've talked with Mr. Garcia, and, and we're trying to correct that whole situation. So I think a lot of these things have already been addressed on some level and will be addressed in the future. I know that we have, Rick is at Camino de Medio up where Judge Nelson's at in Upper Río Hondo or, in San Cristobal, I'm sorry. That's, that's another road that's, we've addressed. We've been out there several times looking at that. Valdez has been addressed. I mean, there's been quite a few roads that have been addressed and, and looked at, so please give me that, and we'll, we'll try to make sure that we accommodate that the best we can.
Where's that chairman at? See, he walked out because he don't drive his county roads.
Next, next item is legal matters, item 14, discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the following, both executive and public session informational items. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
32nd.
Second.
Madam Clerk? Yes?
Yes. Do we have a motion to come back into regular session? A motion and a second call for the vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Turn to our county attorney.
With regard to agenda items 14A and B, legal matters, they were both discussed in executive session. Item A, under the exception for discussion of the acquisition of real property, and item B, for the exception for discussion of pending litigation, and no other matters were discussed.
Do we have a motion to accept the county manager's, I mean, county attorney's report?
Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 And with regard to the purchase agreement, let me, no action was, I should have added, no action was taken on either of those items. I apologize for leaving that comment off. But in addition, with regard to the purchase agreement, it is my understanding that there may be a motion in, on the public session.
After being advised by our legal counsel of the particulars on the purchase agreement, I'm going to make a motion to approve that purchase agreement for the real property in Carson for the fire station.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioners, we had an additional item on the agenda personnel matters, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following, executive and public session informational item, action item, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of, the motion of EMS employee. This matter may be discussed in closed session under open meeting, that exemption 10151H2, which allows for discussion of limited personnel matters. Mr. Archuleta, does this require executive session?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I do not believe so because we have an agreement from the employee on this action. If I could just let the commissioners know and, and then we could take action on that, if that's possible.
Yes, go ahead.
We had a vacancy at the EMS department, and one of the employees who was a full-time billing tech with EMS, Ms. Lucille Trujillo, is requesting to step down into the part-time position. Ms. Trujillo currently makes 1161, which is a pay grade eight, and the billing tech position, which is a pay grade six, is 1075 with a maximum of 1549. Staff is recommending that we allow Ms. Be Hill to step down into that position. She has some issues that she needs to take care of with her mother and cannot devote as much time, 40 hours a week, on a regular basis, and wants to step down into that position now that it's become available. We are also recommending because she does have the experience now, and it's way below the minimum or the medium of the pay grade six, that we allow her to stay at the 1161, but come to a part-time position. So we wanted to bring that in front of the commission.
Mr. Archuleta, then this is recommendation of staff?
Yes, it is.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Everything legal and proper on this?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
I don't see our HR person here, so.
I don't see our HR person here, so I turn to you legal. Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioners, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And a second.
Long day.
Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Ready then.
And to all a good night.